Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the April meeting of your Louisville Town Council. Good to see all you folks in the audience tonight. Just know that you're safe and sound. We have three deputies here, two posted outside, and four more on patrol. So this is probably going to be the safest room in Louisville. But thank you for being here. Council members, good to see you all. Glad we're here in person. We'll do our normal introductions, and starting from Ms. Welch.
Hi, evening. I'm Jane Welch. Welcome, everybody.
Good evening. I'm David Smitheran.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jean Marie Foster.
I'm Mike Horn.
I'm Ken Sadler.
And happy Thursday. I'm Melissa Hunt.
Mr. Franklin is unable, excuse me, to be with us tonight. Our thoughts are out with him. He just came from a very difficult surgery but is recovering well. And so Fred, I know you're watching tonight. Our thoughts are with you. Can't wait to get you back here. Folks, if you will, please, if you'll join us for an invocation by our attorney, Beau Huff, and then a pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Melissa Hunt. If you'll stand if you're able, please.
Let's pray. God, our Father, we thank you that you are the maker and sustainer of life, that you proved that again on this beautiful spring day with green grass growing, the leaves, the buds, the flowers coming out. We thank you for that. We thank you for the many blessings of life that you give to us each and every day. And as we thank you for your many blessings, also keep us mindful of those who are not as blessed as we find ourselves to be. And we especially think of tonight, our brother Fred Franklin. We ask you to keep your healing and comforting hand upon him as he continues his convalescence. We ask you to be with those who find themselves in harm's way in Europe and Ukraine. And then we ask you to be with us during the course of this meeting, that you give us guidance, wisdom, patience as we go through the business of the town this evening. Give you thanks for all these things, in your holy name. Amen.
So please stand and face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
You're set. Everybody's set?
Yeah. We...
Let me go through the adoption of the agenda real quick.
Yeah, I was going to say, Ms. Rel, did you mention the addition of Resolution 29?
I believe we was going to amend the agenda.
Okay. Yeah, I was just, we were at that point.
Very good. We're at that point. We can amend the agenda, should we wish. Mr. Mayor, you want to make that amendment? Under what item?
Under new business, along, following, excuse me, item 12I, we would like to add Resolution 22, 22-29, awarding the contract for the audio visual.
And I guess that really is a necessary addition tonight because we already had the budget amendment done. Is that right, Ms. Rel?
The budget amendment is on the agenda for now.
Gotcha. And so this is just the contract to follow up on that. Very good. Anything else? Council members?
Mayor, I have one. I would like to add, under proclamations for consideration by council, a brief proclamation honoring volunteers and volunteerism for the town.
That would also be new business. Council members, have you all had a chance to take a look at that proclamation?
Yes.
Okay.
So does it go under three or new business?
It's probably under, how about proclamations where it says it right there in the agenda items?
Give me a hand.
Thank you. Council members, any other changes or additions? Staff members, anything else? Very good. If not, entertain a motion to approve the agenda for this evening.
So moved.
Second.
This one makes the motion. Ms. Hunt makes the second. Any further discussion? All who's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Closed? That is unanimous. Now Hank, you have the consent agenda, please.
Okay. Tonight's consent agenda consists of five items. Resolution 2022-024, acceptance and approval of monthly financials for eight months, ending February 28th, 2022. The approval of closed session minutes from February 3rd, 2022. Approval of action agenda briefing minutes from March 3rd, 2022. Approval of regular meeting minutes from March 10th, 2022. And finally, the approval of closed session minutes from March 10th, 2022.
Very good. Council members, any questions for the manager? If not, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Welch makes the motion. Ms. Hunt makes the second. Any further discussion? All who's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Very good. Ladies and gentlemen, the consent agenda are items that generally come before us on a regular basis. They're minutes, financial reports, the kinds of things that we have a chance to look at prior to. Any council member can ask that any of these be pulled off individually to be considered, or in this case, we took them all as one group tonight. PJ, you have some introductions for us. Lang Lamb, what a great name. Deputy Lang Lamb and Deputy Dexter Bodenheimer. So we have Bodenheimer here on our Sheriff's Department. We have Bodenheimer in our Maintenance Department, and we have Bodenhammer at the Community Center. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
No. Close.
If I'm Bodenheimer, somebody's going to come.
Bodenhammer is...
Hal.
Hal.
Yeah, but he's at the Community Center.
Yeah, but you just said something, somebody in our maintenance before that.
Oh, I thought we had another Bodenheimer. Schmidt. There's a Boy Scout song, Jean Jangle, Bodenheimer Schmidt. My apologies, Bodenheimer out there for adding additional one, but you do make three.
We're tickled to have this guy. So let me do the Excel and give you the Excel spreadsheet, give you the stats for the month, and then I'll let you introduce it, or we'll introduce these new deputies. For March, we had a total of 608 calls for service compared to 590 last year at this time. 275 security checks versus 294. 61 traffic arrests, traffic citations, and 53 traffic last year. And then 22 alarms. Response times was 7.6 and 4.8 this time last year. No really outstanding events that stick out. So we're getting summertime. People's getting out and enjoying the warm weather. So just encourage everybody to watch out for people riding their bikes and taking those afternoon walks. And I encourage you to slow down and make sure you're stopping and being safe going through these neighborhoods because we have a lot of people that actually like to get out and walk and enjoy this nice weather. If anybody doesn't have any questions, I'll introduce these new deputies. Pretty excited to have these guys. So we do have Lang Lamb, L-A-M-B. Lamb, Deputy Lamb has been with the agency a short period of time, but he is no rookie to law enforcement. He worked about three, three and a half years with the City of Winston. So we were able to pull him over to the sheriff's office and then, you know, it's kind of like a recruitment field when we see that people are really going to be suited for community policing and especially for Louisville. So it's kind of like training at a ball team or something. When a position comes available, we try to snatch them up. He took Deputy Funkhauser's spot where he got transferred. And as I mentioned, last month, Deputy Southern got promoted, so he could, he come to patrol. So there was a couple different positions that they were able to open up. Deputy Lamb's done an outstanding job. He's only been here a few months, but he's made quite an impression. Hopefully, we'll get him out here at some of these movie nights and around town, and we'll go get him some business cards to hand out so you have his email, so y'all can blow up his email and get to know him. All right? And then we have Daxton Bodenheimer. And I joke with him because I say that he's from DC, lower DC, Davidson County. So he's done an outstanding job. He's been with the agency about four years, come from patrol, worked this side of the county in rural hall. And so we're tickled to have him. Both of these guys have done phenomenal jobs. They have, the town has made quite the impression on them so far. I tell everybody that Louisville is the best kept secret in the agency. So typically, unless somebody gets promoted or has some issues, we try to keep the same people because I think that's the root of community policing where people are known in their community and feel comfortable about approaching these guys. So I don't think you'll have any trouble with getting to know these folks, and we're very fortunate.
Deputy Lamb, Deputy Bodenheimer, either one of you'd like to say anything? Please.
Good to see you all. Just want to say thank you for the warm welcome. I've been here a little over a month now, and I've really enjoyed it. It's been a, it's been a great time so far. I'm just looking forward to continuing to meet you all and getting out in the community and making a difference. I appreciate it.
Really, just to get to what he said, it's been a pleasure so far working for Louisville. If you see me out in the community, feel free to stop by. I don't mind talking to a friendly face. I've already made a lot of acquaintances and a lot of new friends. If you want to stop by, say, hey, see me? Give me a whiff.
Very good. Gentlemen, thank you very much. We appreciate all you do and are really looking forward to seeing you around town. Community policing is a big part of what makes Louisville like it is because we treat public safety a whole lot different out here. It's much more personal, much more engaging with our residents. So welcome. We know you're going to do great work here.
What he meant by stop by and talk to me is by my local. I hope you all have a good holiday weekend, and thank you all for what you do, and thank you for having me.
Thank you, PJ. Stacy, you have a guest to introduce.
I first want to thank the board and committee members that were able to come out tonight. I know a lot of people are out of town. We did issue some invitations to those folks on our board and committee members. But again, with it being spring break week for Winston-Salem County Schools, I know that there's a lot that weren't unable to attend. But with no further ado, this is Jonathan Whitehurst. He's with Kimberly Horn. Jonathan and I have been working together with his team over probably about the last year or so. If you recall, we updated our park plan recently. That was adopted. That was part of this major project. And the last leg of it is our comprehensive plan. It has been a rewarding process. It's been a labor of love. And so Jonathan is here to give a brief presentation tonight to you all about the comprehensive plan, about this last step that we hopefully can get towards adoption and to start implementing the plan. So I will turn it over to Jonathan.
Well, it's great to be here, especially in person after being with you all a couple of times virtually. It's not a long presentation. I hope that you all did get a chance to invest a little bit of time in the document and certainly can answer any questions that you have about the report. I can go to the next slide. Just a real quick kind of overview. As Stacy mentioned, this was kind of a single process that we used to create two plans. One, the park plan that was adopted back in November, and this, the comprehensive plan. It's been a little over a year since we got started. We began with a lot of community input that kind of lasted throughout the process, some data analysis. And then at the end of the day, what we've created is a future land use map and then a variety of supportive framework elements, and we'll talk about that real quick. I wanted to start by taking this back a year, though. It was back in April, actually, April Fool's Day in 2021, of all times, when I was first in front of you all virtually. And we really kind of took three key takeaways away from that conversation. One, I think Louisville is very unique in that it's a new community, but you all have a history of comprehensive planning from really the first day. And so one of the takeaways from that first conversation was to really build on those previous planning efforts. We heard loud and clear that you wanted to make sure that we involved the community throughout this process. And then at the end of the day, you wanted to make sure that this plan was uniquely Louisville. And so with the next slide, what I'd like to kind of show you is how we kind of stayed true to those three takeaways. When we talk about building on previous plans, there's pieces, there's a spread, I think it's pages seven and eight of the document, that really kind of take you through the last 30 years of comprehensive planning in Louisville. We started with a plan and policy review so that we knew kind of where we were starting from. And then when we talk about the strategy board, I mean, there's 70-some strategies that are a part of this document. And really, the beginning of that strategy board was going back through those previous plans and mining those for the actions, and then working with Stacy to see which of those needs to carry through, which ones needs to be revisited, and then some of those kind of, for whatever reason, just were no longer relevant. We involved the community, 1,000-plus participants, 36,000 data points, and more than 2,100 comments. For a community this size, that really is remarkable. And we were very pleased, not with just the amount of participation, but the quality of that participation that we got throughout the process. It really was an important part of the overall plan. And then how do we make this plan uniquely Louisville? The community characteristics, there's an entire section of the report that kind of speaks to what Louisville is today, kind of what are the trends going to be in the future. The future land use map is obviously tailored to Louisville. And then, as again, those strategies, the 70-some strategies really are kind of tailored to Louisville to make sure that the plan, you know, is answering to the local conditions. Real quick about the process. Not too complicated of a process. Start with kind of the existing conditions, work through the community to develop the vision. We created a growth strategy and then built the future land use map and those framework elements around that. I point out kind of the most recent time that I was in front of you was after we had created the first draft of those framework plans but before we got to the implementation. So kind of the bulk of the conversation tonight is going to be a little bit more on the implementation strategy itself. But before we talk about that, the plan itself, as you all saw, organized into these seven chapters, and it really just kind of takes you very intuitively through the planning process, kind of documents the existing and projected conditions in Louisville, documenting the community characteristics, getting into the needs identification, the visioning, a recap of all the engagement that we've done, and then we get into the bulk of the plan itself. The action plan is really kind of where we take and put some responsibilities to all those actions. So it's great to see some of the boards and committees here because they're called out in there. With the engagement, you know, I think it was important for us, particularly given that this is a very unique time to do this kind of a plan with the pandemic and the like, was to the best of our ability to engage people in ways that were comfortable for them. So at the beginning of the process, that engagement was mostly digital. So the online survey, the stakeholder symposium, the first public workshop was all virtual. But at the, closer to the end of the process, we were able to do a public workshop out in Shallerford Park. And so we were able to kind of give it the best of both worlds in terms of digital, virtual involvement, as well as face-to-face. And then we had quite a few presentations to the planning board, the Parks and Rec Board, as we were going through that process. And as I've mentioned a few times, this is my third time having the pleasure to be with you all. The future land use map, the map itself is really a guide to staff and to you all as development decisions are being contemplated in the future. And so we work with the planning board, we work with staff to kind of decide how best to communicate the vision for Louisville, and that's reflected in the future land use map. We call them place types. Those are kind of the ways that we paint the map itself. So everything from downtown to different residential types, all the way to being a little bit more particular about the different types of corridors that exist in Louisville and how, from a development kind of review perspective, you can preserve and enhance what's desirable along those corridors. We talked about the framework plans. These are the things that kind of give structure to the overall comprehensive plan. This is kind of how we organize all of the goals and objectives, the strategies of the overall plan. The land use is the future land use map and some supportive strategies. But to implement that land use vision, you've got to have an understanding of where are your economic development opportunities? Where are your best opportunities to achieve your housing strategy? What do we do with the streets and the paths in Louisville? All of that kind of came into play in the framework plans. And so really, when we talk about how does the future land use vision for Louisville get implemented, it's through the actions that are described in those framework elements. There's a couple of things in the action plan. So the document kind of concludes with a blueprint for implementation. There are a couple of things that I wanted to kind of speak to. The first is the Louisville strategic plan. And what the comprehensive plan does is it makes a distinction between what is a strategic plan and what is a comprehensive plan, and how, you know, communities are using both of those tools in their toolbox to make sure that, at the end of the day, the vision that the community sets forth is achievable. And so the way that we're making a distinction between the comprehensive plan and a strategic plan, should you all choose to do that, is to really, instead of with the comprehensive plan looking so far out, you kind of narrow your focus a little bit, almost like a capital improvement program for the town, to really kind of zero in, okay, these are the next steps that we need to take over the next year, the next two years, the next five years, to kind of continue to work toward the overall vision that is set in the comprehensive plan. And so we included a piece of that in the action plan. The other thing that we talk about in the action plan is the unified development ordinance. And so with the next slide there, we kind of make a distinction between kind of the land use plan itself, establishing kind of the snapshot of preferred uses, guiding again staff and elected officials when working through development decisions. But the regulatory framework is the unified development ordinance and the zoning map. And that really is a very critical next step. And it's one of those situations where we knew that was going to be the next step kind of all along. And so we kind of kept that in mind as we were deciding how much detail to put into the place types in terms of what the development characteristics should be of those places. And so all of, really, the creation of Louisville Tomorrow as a comprehensive plan is leading toward the unified development ordinance that is right around the corner so that you can put the regulatory key to that future land use map to make sure that you get the type of development and the design and the look and the feel, the sense of place. All of those things will come out in that unified development ordinance. So the strategy board I mentioned is 72 strategies. What we did was we identified 10 groups that could be responsible in some way for implementation. And we kind of gave them a lead, support, or participate role. The duration, we talked about whether it's a standalone event or something that's going to be going kind of continuous over a number of years. And then timing costs, it was more kind of relative to one another. We didn't say that this strategy was going to cost $100,000 or $2.5 million because a lot of those strategies really are, is a time adjustment. And so there's a heavy burden that's placed on staff in a lot of cases for those. But what we tried to do with the strategy board is to help staff understand, relatively speaking, which actions are going to cost more time and kind of, you know, if there is a monetary cost to that, relatively speaking, what is that cost going to be? And then last but not least, so you can see the 10 responsible entities there. It goes everything from, you know, staff and administration to the various boards and committees. And then you all, as council members, are not immune from the responsibility that is placed on implementation. And so when we talk about kind of the strategies and the responsibilities that we placed on you all, I'm sure, as you were reviewing the document, your eyes might have gone to that area. It's considering new programs and new committees. It's supporting the grant and the funding that will be necessary to implement some of these actions. The park plan, establishing those new parks, kind of really fulfilling the intent of that particular plan. We talked about the burden that's being placed on existing staff because of the amount of time that some of these strategies are going to require. And so we want you all to kind of consider the staffing level for different departments in the town and take action where necessary. And then there's a lot of policies and a lot of guidelines. Some of those are still to come with the UDO, but we hope that you all will use this plan in a thoughtful way to adopt the policies and the guidelines so that we can kind of continue to work toward the vision that, again, you know, over 1,000 people who provided a couple of thousand comments helped to craft that vision. So with that, I think that is it. Happy to answer any questions again. It's a privilege to be here. Appreciate that.
Council members?
Had a question, please. Jonathan, thanks for coming. It's great to see you in person. Just had a quick question. You mentioned there are how many data points? Was it 36,000 or? Can you expound on what those are?
Sure. Every time on our interactive online map, every time somebody placed a point on a map, we counted that as a data point. Every time someone answered a survey question, we counted that as a data point. Every time somebody gave us a written comment, we counted that. You know, what we tried to do with engagement is to put it on par with the technical data that we've collected along the way. And I mean, I think at the end of the day, you know, with the quantify, the input certainly is important.
Thank you.
Council members?
I have a question. Thank you for your time, and yeah, it's great seeing you this evening. You mentioned earlier about neighborhood centers and campus. That was on one of those maps. Can you go into a little bit of detail about the differentiation between those two and what that looks like in a town of this size?
Sure. So the campus itself is really easy to explain. For the most part, that's your schools. And so the, you know, the public schools or even the private school that you have is kind of captured in that campus. It's a really, it's almost like a special use. It doesn't fit neatly in any one thing. So that's kind of why in the future land use map, we captured it that way. For the most part, I think all of the campus locations are existing, and I think with maybe the exception of the Louisville School that's to be built. What was the...
The other one was the neighborhood centers. We, I saw that throughout the park plan piece as well. Can you talk a little bit about that? And was there any prioritization when y'all looked at that as to where they should start?
Yep. So the centers themselves, you know, Louisville by its very nature is heavily residential, which is certainly okay. And so one of the things that we probably heard more often than not, and I don't know if there's anybody here from Clemens, so it's our apologies, but you didn't want it to be Clemens, right? You didn't want it stripped out, commercial. You wanted it to have kind of, again, uniquely Louisville. That said, you don't want your residents to have to necessarily leave Louisville for the goods and services that they eat. And so kind of the intent with the neighborhood center is to find those locations in the community that are best suited to serve the people of Louisville with goods and services. As far as prioritization, I wouldn't say that it was necessarily prioritized, but there were certainly discussions that were had about where particular centers should be located. I think, you know, there was one south of 421 that was, you know, at one point in an earlier version of the map that was in a different spot. And I think as time goes, we just kind of landed with where those locations are.
And I've got a couple more. I'll make them fairly brief. There was also reference to economic development. In a town of this size, what was the thought process when y'all considered economic development? I mean, what did that look like from y'all's perspective?
Yeah, it has to be kind of the right size, I think, for Louisville. The community characteristics, you know, part of that was to understand kind of what the market is in Louisville for, you know, a variety of kind of economic sectors. I think the economic development opportunities that are identified on the map are heavily related to kind of the areas on the future land use map that make the most sense. So it's kind of, it was almost a chicken or the egg. You put the future land use, the place type where the economic development opportunities are, or does the economic development opportunity determine where the future land use place type should be? I think the economic development strategy for Louisville is heavily weighted in kind of what becomes of downtown. I think we heard very, very clearly that having a vibrant downtown is going to be really important into the future. And so I think the economic development strategy is written in a way that assumes that that is the ultimate goal.
Thank you. I think that was it. Thank you very much.
Council members?
I have a question. Hi, Jonathan. I appreciate what you said about the UDO, the coming of the, I think we're determining this, the UDO rewrite. Is that fair, Stacy? Could you just knit together, and perhaps this is more your bailiwick, the next steps for that? Because land use plans and comprehensive plans are great in terms of identifying the vision, but without ordinance delineating specific requirements, that's a challenge. So we've identified that that is a priority, and I know Stacy, you're working on it. Could you just address where that is in the process, timing-wise, please?
Absolutely. Well, as you know, it was in the budget this current fiscal year, and it'll carry over into next fiscal year. The reason that we wanted to go ahead and put it in was in anticipation of the comprehensive plan finishing up, you know, early year 2022, early spring 2022, was to be able to go ahead and start that process of hiring consultants in order for us to start that UDO rewrite. Reason being is the UDO rewrite is an integral part of this last, kind of, I guess, overarching goal that I have had for the town. Our UDO is somewhat outdated. But before that, what had to happen was this comprehensive plan. It's integral for us to have a comprehensive plan that's updated, that shows us what our residents want and where our residents want it in order for us to go and make those regulations and make sure our regulations fit what the residents want and how they view the growth of Louisville to be. And so I think we've done a good job of that in this comprehensive plan. So now we can continue to move forward with giving us the tea and the regulations, if you will, in order for us to implement this plan.
So the consultant, whomever will be looking at redoing the UDO rewrite, they'll be actually going through, digging in, assessing word by word how that language fits or does not fit with this Louisville Tomorrow comprehensive plan, and then raising those gaps so that we know what to do.
Right.
Yep. Thank you.
Council members. Doug Sadler.
Yes, thanks for the presentation. I've got a question about, you're talking about entities who were charged with certain responsibilities, and you mentioned lead, support, participate. I kind of get what lead means. So what's the difference between some support activity versus participation?
Yeah, that's a great question. I think if you look at the Strategy Board, the only group that is tasked with participating in a strategy is the private development community. And so the distinction that we're making is the support role is kind of a little bit more in the kind of the day to day and kind of, you know, working with the lead to kind of drive the ship, so to speak. And then in some cases, with the private development being a participant, just kind of dragging them along for the ride, for lack of a better term.
All right. And then the other thing, you talked about expanding departmental staffs. And so I'm just wondering, how do you arrive at that suggestion or recommendation or?
Sure. It was more observational. There definitely wasn't an organizational assessment that was done as part of this Conference of Plan. I know even your most recent Conference of Plan did have a detailed organization chart. I think it's more, you know, when we look at all of the strategies, for instance, that the planning and zoning department in particular is tasked with, you know, it's going to be a burden on poor Stacy to kind of carry forward with that. And I think even the park plan, with that having come before the Conference of Plan, we kind of just folded the recommendations of that. But there is, you know, organizational assessment that's associated with that particular plan itself.
So am I hearing that it's more targeted then? I mean, you mentioned the planning department. So is it more specific? Is it more related to that kind of activity, or is it more a general kind of a suggestion?
Yeah. I think just looking at the Strategy Board is a little bit more focused on kind of the administrative departments than otherwise.
Okay, thanks.
I had one more question there. Well, it's probably a twofold. So when you made your presentation, if I'm remembering, when you were showing the participate, lead, and support, there were only two of our boards and committees that had a lead role. That was the environmental and LBC, or the Louisville Beautification Committee, as I recall. Could you just go through the process, the rationale for how you made those determinations?
Yeah, I think it was a little bit of conversation kind of as we were going through that process. I think, you know, Louisville is unique in that it does have quite a few boards and committees, I think, compared to other communities. The order of operations, though, we created the Strategy Board without any consideration of really how it would get done or who would be tasked with leading it. And then, once we had kind of all those strategies in place, we said, okay, who can kind of take the lead on some of these? And it just so happened that that's the way that, I guess, the cards fell.
Okay. Well, I appreciate you being here and all of you folks being here. I know I certainly had an attachment to making sure that, if possible, you all could hear Jonathan in person. So having been on the planning board in years past and worked on the comprehensive plan, digging into that is a good thing. It's a challenging thing. It's a, there's a lot to compete with in terms of some other components, but the board and committee work group, and Stacy can address this a little bit as well, is looking at how to help queue up next steps so you all are given the resources and information and orientation to know how you can activate in ways in which you'd like to get that done. So thanks for being here.
And I didn't think, like, the boards and committee, you know, we talked about the strategic plan as well as the UDO. And I think you all, kind of the boards and the committee, I think the work is just getting started with, you know, respect to those two. And I think with the planning board in particular, I think it's going to have to be much more hands-on in the creation of the UDO, because that'll be the tool for the planning board.
Anybody else?
Jonathan, thank you very much. You provide a little bit of history and background, but I think Ken and I, Mr. Franklin, Ms. Welch, have been here a while. And we go back to when we first developed our first comprehensive plan, and we really weren't sure how we would do that. But it was surprising to us that it turned into the document that it did, and it surprised us how much it was embraced by the community to participate in that. And so this is the fifth or sixth iteration. That was a question, I think. Fifth or sixth?
Probably five.
Five. Five iteration, fifth iteration of it. So it's a real exciting time for us to be at this point, and I'm looking at some of our boards and committee members. It's an exciting time for you, because this is where you really get your batteries charged and can put your head around a lot of these things to help move forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hank, we have something called a budget.
Yes, we do.
You'll need a motion for adoption of the comprehensive.
Do you want me to go ahead with that?
Just give me one second here. Okay, yes, ma'am.
Motion to approve Louisville Tomorrow Comprehensive Plan. Is that what you need, Stacy?
Motion to adopt.
Okay. Motion to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Hunt, a second by Mr. Smitherman. Ordinarily would have had this down under our business activities outside of the presentation side of it, but that's fine. We can do it here. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous.
Thank you. Lot of work. Thank you, Pam.
Put this down if you need. Right on. Thank you. Okay. Everyone, this evening will take home a wonderful parting gift. It looks like this. So this is, so you can have the budget document to be able to peruse that this weekend ahead of our meeting next Monday. I'm going to go ahead and read the manager's budget message for the fiscal year coming 2022, '23. Honorable Mayor and Town Council, as mayor, as town manager, I am pleased to present the proposed general fund budget of $6,864,766 for the fiscal year 2022, 2023. The budget as proposed includes a property tax increase from 17.7 cents per $100 evaluation to 20 cents per $100 evaluation. This represents an increase of 2.3 cents. This budget shows an increase in the general fund budget from the previous year budget as adopted July 1, 2021, of $1,552,222, or 29.2%. This budget as proposed is balanced with $1,238,739 in fund balance from the general fund. This fund balance appropriation represents the costs associated with projects that are not recurring operational costs. The estimated tax base for the town as of April 1, 2022 is $1,666,209,303, producing an estimated avalerum tax revenue of $3,234,385, with 1 cent of the tax rate equalling $161,720. The town of Louisville also collects a levy for a municipal service district. The current tax rate is 5 cents per $100 evaluation. The proposed tax rate for the municipal service district for fiscal year 2022, '23 is unchanged at 5 cents per $100 evaluation. The Town Council has been diligent and used sound financial planning to continue its commitment to the citizens of Louisville to provide the highest standards of service. They have done this while maintaining a level of fund balance to secure future funding opportunities. The available fund balance as of, balance was $5,758,854 as of June 30, 2021. This represents a fund balance approximately 83.89%, based on the projected upcoming fiscal year budget of 2022, '23. This measure is well within the guidelines established in the comprehensive financial management policy adopted by the Town Council. It appears that the effects of COVID-19 pandemic are beginning to subside. COVID cases are declining, and Americans are reporting that they are increasingly more comfortable with activities such as visiting grocery stores, eating out, and attending indoor concerts and events, which hopefully are a positive indicator of economic activity. Unfortunately, as the impact of the pandemic wanes, another source of uncertainty has emerged with the Russian invasion of Ukraine. The U.S. ban on importing Russian oil has contributed to rising fuel prices in the United States. There may still be impacts to come on items like food prices from the availability of raw materials, to say nothing of the potential implications were the conflict to escalate. Inflation is another issue which has greatly affected consumers across the country in recent months. The March Consumer Price Index increased 8.5% over the previous year. As a measure to combat inflation, the Federal Reserve recently raised interest rates from 0.25% to 0.5% and indicated that further hikes are likely throughout 2022. Inflation and interest rate hikes may eat into North Carolina consumers' disposable income. What does this mean for the town's second highest revenue source, the local sales tax? For nearly two years now, sales tax revenues have exceeded virtually all projections and expectations. Direct federal aid to taxpayers and the programs like the enhancement of the child tax credit put more money in people's pockets. However, it may be that this growth is finally beginning to slow. Early numbers from the North Carolina Department of Revenue show that sales tax revenue attributable to January sales only rose 4.4% compared to the same month a year ago. This growth is more in line with that experienced pre-pandemic than that seen in recent months. As the impact of the federal aid to taxpayers becomes more distant and programs like the enhanced child tax credit end, the result could be a reduction in spending on the types of goods that helped drive recent tax sales growth, sales tax growth. The North Carolina League of Municipalities is projecting that current year sales tax collections will end 10.25% above those of the prior year. However, the league does not anticipate double-digit growth again for the upcoming fiscal year. Rather, they are projecting growth at 3.75%, which is more in line with the pre-pandemic levels. In projecting revenues for the 2022, 2023 budget, we have followed the guidance of the North Carolina League of Municipalities along with their researchers and economists. They have provided their most conservative projections for how municipal revenues will emerge in this new fiscal year. Economic growth in North Carolina continues to make headlines, and population growth does not seem to be abating. Steps taken to moderate inflation and the response of the economy to these steps will be important factors to monitor in the months ahead. So too will the course of the COVID-19 virus and the impact of any new variants that might emerge. With the addition of Mary Alice Warren Community Center, the town of Louisville stays committed to the continuation of all of its existing services for the upcoming fiscal year, to include parks and recreation, finance, administration, planning and zoning, public works, residential garbage and recycling, stormwater management, community policing, and beautification. All services are proposed to continue at current service levels for the upcoming fiscal year. The town has four CAPA reserves, reserve funds. In the current fiscal year 2021, '22, '22 budget, annual appropriations to all of these funds totaled $235,000. At the Town Council Planning Session, recently held on February 5, council reaffirmed its desire to proactively support the development of the downtown area and the road and sidewalk improvements throughout the town, as well as the desire to develop future capital facilities such as the new Mary Alice Warren Community Center and a new public works facility. The town currently has $132,067 saved in sidewalks, bike paths, and greenways capital reserve. The town has $130,218 accumulated in the municipal buildings land capital reserve and $329,682 saved in the public works capital reserve. During fiscal year 2017, 2018, the Town Council learned that the North Carolina Department of Transportation plans to assume financial responsibility for the remaining work to be done on the Great Wagon Road, to include design, right-of-way acquisition, and construction. As construction of the Great Wagon Road progresses, we anticipate that the town will participate financially with the North Carolina Department of Transportation on enhancements such as trees and streetlights, as well as the design and installation of water and sewer infrastructure. The town currently has $1,49,469 saved in a capital reserve fund and $734,838 available in a Great Wagon Road right-of-way construction capital projects fund. Between these funds and the capital reserve and the capital project fund, the town has $1,784,307 to fund any future expenses related to the Great Wagon Road. The NCDOT has recently changed its policy regarding cost sharing for sidewalk betterments. In the past, the town of Louisville would be expected to participate financially in the cost of sidewalks for the project, like the Great Wagon Road. The NCDOT no longer requires any cost for sharing from a municipality for sidewalks that are designed as complete streets, projects offering various forms of multimodal traffic. On March 11, 2021, the American Rescue Plan Act Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds was signed into law. It will deliver $350 billion to state, local, and tribal governments across the United States to assist them in maintaining vital public services, even amid declines in revenue, and to build a strong, resilient, and equitable recovery by making investments that support long-term growth and opportunity. Local governments may use their fund funding to replace lost public sector revenue, using these funds to provide government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue experienced due to the pandemic. Furthermore, in the ARPA final rule issued on January 2022, local governments are allowed to use up to $10 million of their funding as revenue replacement without actually having to demonstrate revenue loss. The town of Louisville has been allocated $4,24,470 from this program. During the current fiscal year, the Town Council established an American Rescue Plan Special Revenue Fund to hold the funding as it is received. In the current fiscal year, the town of Louisville transferred $937,48 of their American Rescue Plan or ARPA funding to the general fund to reimburse the general fund for money spent on general government services. Because of this windfall, the general fund in the current fiscal year, the budget as proposed for 2022, 2023 includes increasing the amount transferred to the public works facility capital reserve by $400,000. The budget as proposed also includes a formation of another capital reserve to accumulate funds for future parks and recreation facilities and amenities. It is proposed that the annual contribution to the new Parks and Recreation Capital Reserve Fund would be $400,000. Funding for all capital reserves as proposed as follows. The GWR Right-of-Way Construction Capital Reserve, $115,000. Sidewalks, Bike Paths, Greenways Capital Reserve, $25,000. Municipal Buildings Land Capital Reserve, $170,000. Public Works Building Capital Reserve, $495,000. Parks and Recreation Capital Reserve, $400,000. So be a total contribution to capital reserves in the upcoming fiscal year, $1,205,000. The capital projects remain in the budget during fiscal year 2022, '23 are as follows. Active projects are the Great Wagon Road right-of-way construction, the Gateway Project, the Community Center, and the roundabout at Louisville-Viana and Robin Hood Road. Non-active projects are the Jack Warren Park Maintenance Facility and Playground Expansion. In April of 2019, the Town Council authorized the Community Center Capital Projects Fund. The Mary Alice Warren Community Center was financed using funds from the town's municipal buildings land capital reserve fund, the stormwater capital reserve fund, a $2 million bank installment loan, and transfers from the general fund as necessary. Construction was completed, and the building was put into use in November Construction was completed and the building was put into use in November, two thousand and twenty-one. The capital project fund remains open and the town works through the, the, the capital project fund remains open as the town works through finalizing this project with the builder and awaits delivery of some furniture and equipment. The capital project has a current budget of four million, nine hundred forty-seven thousand, one hundred thirty-seven dollars. The town anticipates the construction will, will begin on the Gateway Project in the upcoming fiscal year. This project is a roadway project to make improvements from Highway four-twenty-one interchange on Williams Road, with improvements continuing on Williams Road between the interchange and the roundabout at Shalaford and Williams Road. This is a project utilizing federal STPDA funds. The project has an estimated cost of approximately one point five million dollars. The project will be paid for with eighty percent of those expected costs coming from the federal aid and twenty percent match from the town. The town will continue design work on a roundabout project at Robin Hood Road and Lewisville-Viana Road. The project is, is the construction of a single-lane roundabout at Robin Hood Road and Lewisville-Viana Road. The project will include necessary sidewalk connections at the roundabout and streetscape, lighting, and landscaping. The project has an estimated cost of one point two-seven million dollars. The project will be paid for with eighty percent of the expected costs coming from the federal aid, from federal aid and twenty percent as a match from the town. The town has been awarded funding for a CMAC project to extend sidewalk along Lewisville-Viana Road from Riverwood Drive to Robin Hood Road. The project will be paid for with eighty percent plan, eighty percent in expected costs coming from federal aid and twenty percent match from the town. The total costs of the project are estimated at one point, one million, two hundred thirty-four thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars. The planning board and staff desire to engage in work related to rewriting the town's unified development ordinance. The budget is proposed, contains funding to facilitate this work in the upcoming fiscal year budget. In conclusion, the budget, this budget reflects the desire of council to address the needs of the town while being cognizant of economic conditions. Choices made and expenditures were done to meet the priorities and goals of the council established during the year with assistance of numerous advisory boards and committees. During the next weeks, the council will meet to deliberate the proposed, the proposal set forth and make adjustments as needed. I would like to thank the staff for their assistance with this development of this budget and the town council for their continued guidance and support. Final adoption of the budget will be scheduled for the town, for the council meeting in June. If I may be of any assistance, please contact me, please feel free to contact me. Sincerely, William H. Perkins, Jr.
[inaudible]
Ladies and gentlemen, we, we won't go into questions and answers and discussions on the budget right now because it's just now being presented to us, but starting Monday, the eighteenth, oddly enough, it's also tax day, uh, we will begin our first budget workshop. We encourage folks to please come and participate in that, listen to the discussions. I think if the upcoming workshops are any indication, past workshops are an indication of the upcoming ones, uh, there will be thoughtful and, and vigorous discussion of the budget as we try to make the best decisions we can to benefit the town of Lewisville and our residents. Thank you, Hank.
You're welcome.
Very good. Carol Owens, please come up. Carol, ordinarily, I would get up and stand beside you, but, um, we're still in kind of COVID protocol, so let me just go ahead and, and, uh, do the proclamation from here and we'll present it from here. This is a proclamation for Historic Preservation Month, May, two thousand and twenty-two. Whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for economic development, tourism, promotion, revitalization of neighborhoods, fostering local pride and maintaining community character while enhancing livability, and whereas the town of Lewisville has demonstrated support for historic preservation through its participation and historic preservation efforts within the town, and whereas the Lewisville Historical Society is one of the long-established organizations of the town that is dedicated to preserving our local history and heritage, whereas Historic Preservation Month is cosponsored by the Forsyth County Historic Resources Commission, Preservation Forsyth, and other local preservation and neighborhood organizations throughout Forsyth County, and whereas these organizations encourage members of the community to participate in creative and fun events related to historic preservation as a way to celebrate Preservation Month, uh, two thousand and twenty-two, and now therefore it be resolved that the mayor and the town council in Lewisville to hereby declare the month of May, two thousand and twenty-two, as Historic Preservation Month, and call upon the residents of Lewisville to join the hundreds of communities across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observance. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of the town of Lewisville and that a copy be furnished of Forsyth County Historic Resources Commission adopted this fourteenth day of April, two thousand and twenty-two. Council members, any questions? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Very good. Mrs. Walsh makes a motion. Mr. Smitherman makes the second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Very good. That's unanimous. Carol, we, we are spreading it as we speak.
Well, we thank y'all.
Thank you.
For your hard work. Thank you so much.
Anything else you'd like to add, or you're just here to collect the paper and go?
[laughing]
Very good. Thank you. And, and folks, I think if you were to, if you look out this back corner, you can see the Nissen House, and the Nissen House is a wonderful example of what local historic preservation efforts, um, have become and, and certainly a great addition to our community. Susan Linker sitting right there in the audience with a big smile, and Mary Kay Brown sitting right there with a big smile, because you, the two of you and a number of other folks were, uh, very instrumental in making that happen, um, five years ago, did we start?
Yeah, it's been a year.
Oh, time sure flies when you're moving houses. Okay. Very good. Folks, if you haven't been by the Nissen House, um, they have a phone number, give them a call, they have an email, I believe, and, uh, arrange for a tour because I think you'll enjoy what the restoration efforts have done there. Alrighty, um... Ms. Foster, since this is your proclamation, we'll let you engage in it.
Thank you. Thanks for the consideration, folks, for adding this to the agenda for discussion. Um, well, it's not my proclamation, I, let me just give some quick background. April is Volunteer Appreciation Month, next week is Volunteer Appreciation Week nationally. Um, last year, you might recall that council, all of us, created individual videos just to send out a thank you personally to our boards and committee volunteers. This year, when the work group had discussion as part of the BA, the Board and Committee Work Group, had some discussion about what we wanted to do different and better this year, the thought was, well, making it more about volunteers and even volunteerism. So, um, some thought was given to that. I then looked at the interest, council interest assessment form. Mr. Smitherman, Councilman Smitherman, expressed an interest in this particular item, and he was the only one. Councilwoman Hunt and, and Welch also expressed an interest in appreciation in general, so I looped them in to say, is there any interest in this proclamation idea? That's the upside. The downside is, the idea came forth in my brain after the agenda had already gone out. So, when I checked in with my colleagues to see, is there even any interest in, in seeing that this is even worthwhile, in general, the thought was, sure, if it's not too much trouble. Um, so I checked in with the work group and how that laid out was, sure, we can make that happen. The process by which is usually occurring is that the clerk communicates to the mayor and the mayor makes a determination as to whether or not that goes on the, the calendar or, excuse me, the, uh, agenda. So, given the fact that the process was not well-timed, we're, we're behind the eight ball in terms of timing, that's why I'm asking for consideration, because Dora was able to take, um, some information, create a focused, crisp, um, recognition of volunteers and volunteerism in general, and I would just ask for the consideration of the group. Now, Mayor, just to be clear, this did not go to all of the council members. It was shared with these folks just to see if there was any interest, and the thought was, well, we can discuss it, possibly read it since it's short, but again, it's up to the council as to whether or not they want to proceed. Anything you all want to add that I missed?
I, I just have a question. So, the proclamation is for a, more of a national volunteerism support, or can you give me a little bit of how that flows into our volunteerism here in the town with the boards and committees specifically?
So, similar to what, what just happened here, it was, what May is National Historic Preservation Month, thank you. Likewise, nationally, there are organizations that recognize volunteers and volunteerism. So often, local groups, municipalities will say, well, we would like to recognize that as well. So, the idea being that we would just say, given that this is happening at a national level, we too like the fact that we have local volunteers who not only serve their community but also serve the town. So, the idea was that since last year, we did something specific and there wasn't anything other than just possibly Jeannie doing some things on Facebook, the idea was, well, what if we had a proclamation that at least formally said, this is, this is what we believe, this is what we think is important, and we benefit as a town for people giving their time and service. Does that answer?
It does. Dora, do we have any proclamations on file for boards and committees of this nature?
Doing a really quick computer search earlier today, I did not see one.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jay Marie.
Yeah, for, so for my clarification, I understand that, um, it's in recognition of volunteers, not just with the, our government, but in all aspects of community, whether it's church or, um, different types of volunteer groups, other than just, um, government and town groups, volunteers in general.
Yep, yep, that's right, that it's all part of a larger framework, that we're all doing our part, whether it's town or something else, that gives back.
Thank you for that clarification. Thank you.
Council members, let me just, um, it, I guess, if I understood correctly what Ms. Foster just said, not, not all of you have had a chance to look at this proclamation. I had a chance to look at it Saturday about three o'clock. Let me just kind of go ahead and read it, and that way you'll know what you're getting ready to vote on. Uh, whereas the month of April has been designated as Volunteer Appreciation Month to recognize the hard work, dedication, and passion of volunteers and national service members throughout our nation, and whereas national, as whereas during national volunteer work, we celebrate the impact of volunteer services. Ms. Foster, with your indulgence, I have substituted the next paragraph to further elaborate more on our boards and committees and recognize their hard work because, um, clearly, while this is a national, um, volunteer recognition, we're so proud of the work that you do, and we all want to make that very clear and specified in this one. Whereas to our boards, committees, and other activities, volunteers have dedicated countless hours helping to guide the growth of our community and fulfilling the vision established in the town's comprehensive plan. Whereas the town of Lewisville believes that the government alone cannot meet all of our town's needs, so we recognize businesses, faith-based organizations, nonprofit organizations, foundations, and individuals who serve in town government and in our community, making a difference, and whereas the town of Lewisville is committed to encourage volunteerism on a national, and national service among its employees, residents, partners, businesses, and organization. Now therefore, uh, we, I'm going to change that from I to we hereby, uh, the, the mayor and Lewisville Town Council, as we generally do, hereby proclaim the week of April twelfth, April seventeenth through twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two, as Volunteer Appreciation Week in the town of Lewisville and urge our residents to recognize the positive impact of volunteerism and national services in our community. This will be proclaimed today, fourteenth of April, two thousand and twenty-two. Any questions? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Ms. Foster makes the motion, Ms. Walsh makes the second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Proclamized.
Thank you all.
Is that a word? Proclamized? Proclamated? Alrighty. Ladies and gentlemen, we're now at the first opportunity for our residents to address the council on issues that are important and near and dear to their heart. Uh, this is our opportunity to listen to you, hear your concerns. If anybody here this evening wishes to speak, we'd like you to come up, um, hold your, and give us your name and your address and hold your comments for three minutes if you would. Uh, Mr. Sutton, Tim Sutton, I believe you have signed up to speak.
Good evening.
Hello.
Had the privilege, uh, recently of meeting with Mr. Brian Moore, who is the facilities director of the new, uh, community center. Beautiful facility, very impressed, and I wanted to say thank you tonight to the town and to the council. Did a great job. It's my first opportunity to go in there. The reason I went in there is because I wanted opportunity to use the facility. Tim Sutton Ministries International is a nonprofit religious and charitable institution here in Lewisville. My wife and I have been residents of this city for thirty-three years now, and, um, we do festivals all around the country. One of the things that we do, festivals all around the country, including one coming up in Gastonia in May, one in Alabama in, uh, July, and in Oklahoma in October, in, excuse me, in, uh, September. And, uh, one of the things we started during the pandemic was a program we call Operation Share the Love. Operation Share the Love basically bought gift cards, and we went to the parking lots of the grocery stores, only place people could go, and we gave away gift cards, free gift cards, just because we wanted to, during the time when people were hurting, going on with the pandemic, wanted to be a blessing and give back to the community. We did this last year at Christmas time, Operation Share the Love, in the city of Winston-Salem, and we were able to raise twelve thousand dollars and to bless seventy families with a one-hundred-dollar gift cards with toys, gifts, candy, prizes, giveaways, big screen television, bicycles, all kinds of things in the community. And I had it in my heart this year to, uh, try to give back to the Lewisville community since we've lived here for thirty-three years, and so, uh, I went down to visit the community center and met with Mr. Moore, and, uh, so that basically brought me to the fact that after I discussed with him the cost and the things involved in that, I, I wanted to let you know that normally, our typical cost, now, I, I do want to say this, I understand that you have not had opportunity because the community center is so new to really review the cost of usage of the community center as based on what it was with the old community center, where my son, by the way, got married and had a reception, praise God. And, uh, so, I, I know you hadn't had time to review that, but our typical cost is anywhere from two hundred to six hundred dollars per event for a three-night event, and what we want to do in Lewisville this year is what we call Operation Share the Love, three nights of Christmas in December. And so, when I discussed that with, uh, Mr. Moore, I found out that basically the cost for using the community center is a range of, of a hundred dollars an hour with a minimum of four hours, i.e. four hundred dollars for the room for one night. Now, we always draw at least a hundred to a hundred and fifty people, so we know we'll need at least two rooms. So, when I added that all up, I came to a total of, for three nights, four-hour minimum, eight hundred dollars times three nights, uh, twenty-four hundred dollars, which for any nonprofit, and particularly for ours, is fairly exorbitant in the cost, and so we wanted to come and make some proposals and suggestions to the council on new considerations for fee structures, particularly for nonprofit agencies. Now, I understand that there are certain nonprofit agencies that are already on the approved list, but there's a moratorium or like a frozen, those that you add. And so, in discussions with Mr. Moore, I came up with these proposals that I would like to make that are more in line with the things that we've seen around the country, uh, such as even in Nashville, Tennessee, where we did a, a program like this last year, we saw a cost for three nights of around six or seven hundred dollars to, to our agency. So, I was going to propose and suggest the potential of, now, I have, as a nonprofit, I have no problem paying something. I think we should have. Uh, but I was proposing at least a fifty percent discount in fees for the use of the community center, a discount for usage, usage of more than one room, a discount for multiple night usage, and allowing a two-hour minimum rather than a four-hour minimum for a nonprofit agency. We won't need to be there more than a couple of hours. And so, four hours, four hundred dollars, I mean, we're throwing a lot of money away, which I'd rather give to the community rather than spend it on fees to use for a facility. So, as I said, your cost would be approximately twenty-four, twenty-four hundred dollars, but with these proposals, um, I think it would be more in line with what I've seen around the country. So, I would like to ask that the council consider this in the future for not only my nonprofit, for other nonprofits in the area. Yes, sir.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Sutton.
Thank you.
Uh, we will, we'll fish this up, where, as you mentioned, we're right in the process of trying to make some determinations on fees, but, uh, Dory, if you'll just kind of make note that we want to go ahead and bring this out probably sooner than later, what is your timeframe to have to make a decision?
My, my program will be the last, uh, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday night before Christmas is the proposed date of Operation Share the Love, Three Nights of Christmas. Now, I did speak, when I did speak with Mr. Moore, he said all of those dates were available, so obviously I just wanted to be sure I got in my application and keep it locked in.
Great.
I'll be making a mission trip to Liberia possibly the week or two before, so I'm kind of locked in to having to do it at that particular time.
Sure, but you'll need, you'll need some kind of clarification from the town within the next, what, thirty days?
That would be great.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll bubble it up and, and talk about it.
And thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight.
Thank you for all you're doing.
Mayor, one, one thing, he did not mention his address.
We need to get your address, Mr. Sutton. Seven hundred, Busik Court.
Lewisville, North Carolina, our fair city. Very good. Next person who's signed up to speak, Susan Linker. Next person who's signed up to speak, Susan Linker.
Susan Linker, 814 Reynolds Road, Louisville. Greetings to all of you tonight. I come to you as a member of the Louisville Beautification Committee and also as a member of the Louisville Historical Society. Tonight, I'd like to address two issues that I see in the new comprehensive plan. One with my beautification hat on, and the other as a defender of historic preservation in our town. In its opening sections, the new comprehensive plan announces that people in Louisville would like to see more green spaces created and more beautification of parks. Later in the plan, there's real support for the creation of so-called mini-parks. Tonight, I'd like to challenge you all to take advantage of this wonderful opportunity that we have to do three things. First, dedicate the property donated by Fred Moser on Schallford Road to the creation of a permanent, beautified mini-park with benches and hopefully a fountain that will draw the community out to walk and visit together in downtown Louisville. And this would also simultaneously fulfill the goal of bringing people together, which is one of the things that we've seen also in the Parks and Rec Plan. Second, open negotiations with the public schools to form a partnership to beautify and care for the Messick Memorial Garden that adjoins town hall and is owned by the schools, something that will benefit the town, the school, and the community. Third, I want you to know the beautification committee has submitted an ambitious proposal to the town to beautify the area along the walking trail at the back of Warren Park. We believe that if the proposal is implemented by the town, it will increase the use of the walking trail dramatically, and it will support all three of these proposals. And finally, now with my historic preservation hat on, I have to tell you how disappointed I am at how little attention has been given in the new comprehensive plan to historic preservation in Louisville, particularly in comparison with the 2015 plan. I beg you all to do whatever is necessary to protect the future of the historic Lavenour House, home of the founder of Louisville, and probably the most important historic building in our town. Thank you all for all the support that you've given us over the years, both for beautification and for your support over the historic George Elias Nissen House.
Thank you, Susan. Is there anyone else that wish to speak? Yes, sir, yes, ma'am, please come up. State your name, your address, Mary Kay Brown.
I'm Mary Kay Brown, president of the Louisville Historical Society, and I reside at 7335 Bullard Road in Clements. That's all right, I agree with y'all, I'm Clements. And I'm here to announce, as was done before, that May will be Preservation Month and Preservation for Sykes, and I appreciate Harold being here tonight to accept that proclamation. And then we'll be having events across the county celebrating the importance of the story of our heritage represented by our historic properties. And I congratulate the Town of Louisville and its citizens for caring about the heritage of the area and recognizing the contributions of history to the economy and the quality of life of the town and the area. The Louisville Historical Society appreciates the support of the town for our historical marker program, which is just one thing, and over the years, you've been very supportive, in which grants funded 15 of the 16 markers that have interacted since 1994. And especially for your generous help and support that allowed us to save the CA 1876, George Elias Nissen House. The Louisville Historical Society will be having a Preservation Month event. There will be an art show featuring the watercolors of local artists, Rick Jones at the historic Nissen House on Sunday, May 22nd, from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. His watercolors will be all paintings of local historic properties and the historic Schallford of the Yadkin River. The event is co-sponsored by the Louisville Arts Area Arts Council, and it is free. So I hope y'all can come out. Louisville was built with enterprise and perseverance, which is echoed in the life of George Elias Nissen, an industrial pioneer who ran a grease mill and sawmill with his brother-in-law in 1970. Louis Logan era, the founder of the town, that provided, and all these, the Nissen Industries provided jobs for the growing of the town of Louisville. And that is the spirit that we continue with as we build Louisville's future, and I do want to thank you all for your attention to that future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Kay. Anyone else wish to speak? Ladies and gentlemen, for you watching at home, either on Facebook or TV6, you can submit comments to townclerk@lewisvillenc.net, townclerk@lewisvillenc.net. Ms. Moore, you have some appointments for us.
Yes, sir. By acclamation, we would like for the council to consider appointing three representatives to the Parks and Recreation and Cultural Development Board. Those individuals are Erin Crum, Erin Hutmacher, and Deborah Stokes. And to the zoning board of adjustments--
Let's take these individually if we can, okay? Council members, unless there's objection, I move that we approve these appointments by unanimous acclamation.
Agreed.
Very good. Okay.
Sorry, let me make my note. And then the other one is for the zoning board of adjustments. It's the unexpired term of Philip May that expires on 3/31/23. Mr. May, as you may remember, was appointed to the planning board. And the individual that has applied is Anne-Marie Stanford.
Council members, maybe entertain a motion for the appointment, please.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Walsh makes the motion, Ms. Hunt makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Congratulations, Ms. Stanford. We look forward to your service.
Okay. The next item are two appointments. The first one is Appointment Order 2022-004, appointing Melody Joyner to the Environmental Conservation and Sustainability Committee.
Will entertain a motion, council?
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Hunt makes the motion, Mr. Smithman makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Congratulations, Ms. Joyner.
And the final appointment is Appointment Order 2022-005, appointing Ms. Anne-Marie Stanford to the Public Safety Advisory Committee.
Intertain a motion, please.
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Hunt makes the motion, I believe Ms. Welch made the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Congratulations again, Ms. Stanford. We look forward to all of your service, and thank you for giving up your time and effort and energy to be part of our committees and board structures. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Stacy, you have our public hearing for the night.
While Dory is getting the PowerPoint presentation up, if you recall, last week, you were briefed on UDO L165 for the downtown overlay and LD1 and LD2 zoning districts. This is a text amendment that the planning board has diligently been working on, and we feel good about it, and I'd like to present that to you tonight for consideration. So again, as mentioned, this is L UDO 165. This is a change, a text amendment to the downtown overlay and some changes that are made to LD1, which is Louisville Downtown, and LD2, zoning districts that are preferred zoning districts for the downtown area, the core area, and the gateway area. So in this proposal, initially, this text amendment was from concerned citizens, it made its way to council, and then as a direction from council staff and the planning board have, this is our response to that request that was made. It is again to alter those provisions in the Unified Development Orders that I spoke about. The intent mainly for this text amendment is to clarify regulations and to lessen the conflict that we have found in parts of our ordinance and our Unified Development Orders. So just for your orientation, I added a map in the presentation, and you can see the purple area is the downtown core area. This is where the preferred land use, or excuse me, the preferred zoning districts of LD1 would be. And then in the green area is the downtown gateway area. That's where the preferred zoning district LD2 is. It's one of those special zoning districts that we have for this particular area. So first, I wanted to go specifically over the changes that are in LD1 and LD2. What we wanted to do with this was mainly, in other words, lessen the conflict between the zoning district and the actual overlay that governs the downtown area, as you saw on the map. So what we've done in this, we did mimic the height requirements, we made changes to those so that they are, they mirror the downtown overlay requirements. We made changes to the credits for on-street parking. We added a calculation in there for clarity, so it's gotten dry, it's clear of what spaces can be counted of onsite street parking in lieu of off-site or parking spaces that would be in their parking lot on their property. And there's some conflicting language that was removed. We've made a lot of little errors that we found here and there that have been updated throughout the ordinance, the LD1, LD2 section, and also the downtown overlay. And secondly, in the LD1, LD2 changes, we made architectural character standards. That's a big section of the ordinance that we actually took out, and we made reference to the downtown overlay requirements. So these requirements are in one space in the ordinance, instead of having them in two separate spaces. So again, errors, text, grammar, spelling, the errors that we found, or other small changes that you'll see throughout the text that you've been provided with, of changes that were made. So now, getting into the meat of things, this is the changes that we made to the downtown overlay. This overlay, again, is specific to the downtown areas, the core area, the gateway area. Again, errors in the text, the spelling, those types of things were changed, and we've added visuals into our downtown overlay. I have to give credit to Hannah, our previous summer intern that we had. She was integral in helping with those visuals, working with some architects that she knew, that professionals to help give us some guidance on those visuals and those types of things. So for the architectural standards, there are main things that we wanted to take a look at. As you know, building mass and scale was a great concern that we had of some problem areas in our Unified Development Ordinance. And so we have added some new requirements, made just a few changes to those. Height is the first one. What the planning board and I have decided on, or what we're proposing, is that if there's a building with a roof pitch between 812 and 1212, the maximum height shall be 48 feet. To give you a little bit of reference, the roof pitch on the bathroom facilities at the square, that's a 1212 pitch, so it's a very steep pitch. Any building or any portion of a building, a structure, that has a roof pitch less than 812, their maximum height could only be 32 feet. It could not reach the maximum 48-feet height calculation. We felt that 48 feet was still a good height to go with. In other areas of the town, the maximum height would be 60 feet. So in the downtown, this still is significantly lower for a maximum height that would be normally required in other areas of town. We did not change the calculate, or how we calculate height in the ordinance. We did quite a bit of research and looking at other areas and how they did so, and ours is actually one of the more simpler ones and one of the more easier ways of how we calculate height. So we are not proposing a change to actually how that calculation is done. So the next thing is large-scale buildings. We took a look at, you know, what if there's a large-scale building that's beside of a building that's not quite as large, or does not seem or meet a large-scale type of building? So into the ordinance, we've added three options. We call these forms. So three different forms that a developer may choose from to apply to the architecture of their building. They would be required to choose one of these forms. The intent is to lessen the mass of the building, to lessen the towering of the building onto other buildings that are located in the downtown overlay. So the first one is minor wall offsets or wall setbacks. You can see in the visuals right under the text, it just kind of gives you an idea of what we're meaning by this. It includes pushing and pulling. The front facade would not be just one, you know, wall. It would have different pushing and pulling, I guess you could say, different visuals in the facade to create and break up the frontage of the building and break up the massive, massing of the frontage of that structure. A lot of what we saw in other ordinances and what other people are doing was 24 inches would be the minimum, which is two feet is the preferred minimum. Of course, they would have the option to do quite a bit more than that if they so chose. It also, you know, we're still requiring, or the covered porches, the facade requirements, all of those types of things would still be added to this. This is just one of the first forms that they come to that they have the option of choosing from. The second form is the height variation. A good example that we, kind of, we're taking a look at for this portion of the ordinance or this proposal is the tennis office. You'll notice that building, it is considered a large-scale building, but the height of the structure, there's variance. It's not all one level, it's not all one height for that building. So one of the forms that they could choose would be height variation. It's different pitches of roof, different heights of the roof that can be added, and the point of that is to add the visual interest, to reduce the boxiness of a building, to reduce the mass of a building. The building heights would apply to this, so depending on the portion of the structure, whatever pitch that would be, the height restrictions that I mentioned earlier would apply to these height variations. And the last form that they're allowed to choose from is upper-floor step backs. When they talk about upper-floor step backs, say for instance, you have the first floor at one area of the building line, and then the upper floors would be stepped back from where that upper floor is. So you're not drawing a continuous wall. It's almost like the wall setbacks, except it's a vertical thing and not a horizontal thing. So it does, those recess portions would be from street view. It would include the perimeter yard around the downtown overlay. That is something that we added into. So if it is a property that is adjacent to residential property or a building that's going to be along the border of the downtown overlay, we're asking that those upper-floor step backs be utilized in other areas, not necessarily just the street frontage, to help lessen all of those different facades for the building. So what this does, it reduces those looming effects. You don't have just one big box going up, and then we're recommending a minimum step back of five feet for any structure that's taller than 20 feet. So the minimum would be five feet essentially for buildings to have that upper-floor step back, if they have a second floor on their facade. So some quick other changes that we made, we looked at the roofs. Again, we added the height requirements to the roofs, so that is one thing that has to be followed. We did clarify flat roofs, excuse me, and they have to be hidden by parapet walls. Low-sloped roofs have to be interrupted by some sort of, something around those. Overhanging eaves are required on slope roofs. And then for all roofs, at any height, no matter what height they are, utility structures such as HVAC equipment, elevator shafts, those types of things would have to be screened from view. For lighting, we added the provision in the downtown overlay, just for clarification, we do have a section in our ordinance of other standards that is our lighting ordinance for commercial properties. So we're referencing that particular section so that the lighting standards are specifically applied to our downtown overlay as well, not just other commercial properties outside the downtown. And then parking, I talked about this a little bit in LD1 and LD2. We did the same in the downtown overlay for credits for on-street parking and off-street parking as we did in LD1 and LD2. We wanted to mirror those again, so there are no conflicts. And then we added a provision, or beefed up, if you will, the provision for connectivity between the parking areas. It will be required where feasible. If there's, you know, a topography change, it would be up to the town, the town's discretion of whether or not to require that at council level. Okay, so another change that we made, we wanted to soften the impact of the downtown overlay on adjoining properties-- If there's, you know, a topography change, it would be up to the town, the town's discretion of whether or not to require that at council level. Okay, so another change that we made, we wanted to soften the impact of the downtown overlay on adjoining properties, especially if those adjoining properties are residential. So in the LD1 and LD2 zoning districts, there was already some buffer requirements. We are adding those to the downtown overlay, but they're a little bit different because it's mainly talking about the perimeter of the downtown overlay. So the first regulation would be a type 2 buffer yard, which is a visual buffer. It's not a type 3, where it would be a complete visual buffer, but it is a buffer that would be required in landscaping in between the downtown overlay and a property that's zoned residential. Now, for side yards, we are also requiring a type 2 buffer for any property within the downtown overlay that adjoins residential, because we still do have a lot of residential properties in our downtown overlay, and a lot of properties that are still zoned for single-family development. For the removal, one would be allowed to remove that if that pre-existing condition, say for instance, if they are developing their property and nearby or right next door is a single family. Well, if that single family gets zoned to commercial, then since that is commercial property above in commercial, then if they so choose, they could be allowed to remove that because that condition no longer exists, because it's no longer single-family development beside of it. Fences, we have specific materials that are allowed. Most of it is wood, masonry, or some sort of material that mimics what the material of the building is. We do allow chain-link fences. They have to be vinyl coated, but they're only allowed in the IP districts. IP is institutional public, that's where you have your government facilities, such as Town Hall, and your schools, and sometimes churches, is the only place that those would be allowed. And when they are, plantings have to be incorporated to, again, kind of soften the appearance of that chain-link fence. The last thing that we did was we added a provision for minimum side yard setbacks. As you know, currently, in the downtown overlay, in the downtown core area specifically, there are zero minimum side yard setbacks. Buildings can be put right up to the property line on the sides. So when and if there's a buffer yard required, as I mentioned earlier, the type 2 buffer yard, that is now what the minimum setback would be. If it's, if it's up against commercial within downtown overlay, the minimum side yard setback would still be zero. But if it is up against single-family residential, or if it is on the boundary of the downtown overlay, then that type 2 buffer yards, the width of that buffer yard would be the setback. Our provisions in our ordinance and the landscaping standards and buffer yard standards that, depending on what they plant, depends on, there's a table, so depending on what they plant, depends on the width of the yard. So if they, if they plant the landscaping much more dense, it could be like 15 feet. If they want to spread it out, then that width is going to get, that side yard width is going to get even more. So that would be up to the developer to decide how dense they would want to plant that, which would in turn face what their side yard setback would be. So the last thing, Mayor, I don't know if you want to dive into this with me as well, but this was actually a concern, the mayor and I had a conversation about the building orientation and the main entrance. Currently, in our ordinance, a front door, or the primary user entrance, is required to be on the front-facing facade of Shalford Road, or the Great Wagon Road, or at one time, it was Jennings Road, when Jennings was, was, was part of the downtown. It is no longer part of the downtown overlay. So the concern was that those doors are never utilized. When you go up, if you were to walk or go up to one of those doors, say the pharmacy, for instance, it's locked, it's never utilized, just about any door that you go up to in downtown overlay, other than maybe Town Hall, those doors are not primary user entrances. They're just not being used. So what I took a look at was different regulations that would still require the facade requirements to make sure that we don't have a blank facade on the frontage of those buildings, if they evute a ride, a public right-of-way, but no longer really requiring a door. If they want to put a door, they are very well capable and allowed to do so, but it would no longer be a requirement. So last night, the planning board met, and with the recommendation of the mayor, I went to them and put this new text before them that I have added, in order for them to be able to decide, yes, they're okay with this, no, they're not, let's tweak it a little bit. They had one or two changes with some wording helped me out with making sure everything flowed properly, and they were overall okay, and blessed the change for me to bring to you tonight. So that is one thing that is not in the material that you have before you. The main thing is that now we are, we're still requiring that the buildings face Shalford Road or the Great Wagon Road. Parking would be to the side or to the rear of the buildings. We want the primary user entrance to still be articulated, but it doesn't have to be on Shalford Road or the Great Wagon Road. It can be on any side of the building that they so choose. We still are requiring pedestrian facilities to get them from the parking lot or to the front door, or wherever their primary user entrance is, or to the sidewalk, to, from the sidewalk on Shalford and Great Wagon. I do anticipate when the Great Wagon Road is built, there is going to be on-street parking, so there may still be some doors that developers want to put on the front of their building. And that's all well and good if that's what they want to do, but again, it would no longer be required. The concern for me, also with the mayor, is where, say for instance, built the vet's office. When a building is in between the two, what do you choose? Where does it go? It's just kind of hard, you know, and even, even the pharmacy, you know, we have, we have buildings already in the downtown where the doors are not being utilized. So what we did, the main added regulation, you can see on the PowerPoint in front of you, we added, "Building walls with street frontage shall emphasize pedestrian-oriented architectural features, such as facade articulation, windows, awnings, porticoes, and other similar features." So what this does is even though they're not required to have a door on that street-facing facade or that public right-of-way, they still have to meet the facade requirements. They still have to orient the building for pedestrian friendliness, and they still have to use those facade articulations that we would normally require, it's just that they don't have to have a door there anymore. Again, that, this, this language was blessed by the planning board last night, so that's all I have. That's all the changes. I know it's quite a bit of changes that we've made. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those. I know it's a lot of information that I've kind of thrown at you tonight. Yes, Stacy?
Stacy, I just have one question. With the changes that have been made to the way the buildings are going to look, with the setbacks and the different sizes, is that going to be cohesive with what's already in place?
Yes. Are you talking about the buildings that are already built?
Correct.
It is. It actually, a lot of the buildings in downtown is a lot of what we've taken to say, this is what we want to see, so how do we make the regulations to do those types of things?
Thank you.
We did send these changes through an architect to help us out with some language, does this work? You know, I mean, I'm not an architect, I don't design buildings. We do have some expertise on our planning board, and one of our newer planning board members is in construction, does dabble in designing a lot of buildings, commercial buildings, in fact. So he was able to give us a lot of help in the matter as well, so.
Thank you.
All right. So I have a couple things that I just want clarity on. You mentioned about the chain-link fence having a vinyl coating, or something of that nature. Is there a color reference or preference that, that is put in that?
Yes, I believe it's black or green.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I didn't pull.
Fences, vinyl-coated, dark green or black?
Okay. All right. And then my other, I've got two other clarifications I kind of need. And Dora, you may need to go back to one of those drawings for me. I think it was the third or the second one, if you don't mind. So when they showed these, when, when these are shown, they're both shown with that setback over there on the right-hand side, but, go to the second one, Dora, for me. So you still see that setback, but then you, or the one with the heights, the varying heights on the thing? Yeah. So you still see that setback? It can be either or?
It can.
Okay.
We did put, and you might concede this in the text, there are disclaimers to these visuals. These visuals are not meant by any means to say this is the building that you have to build.
Sure, I saw that.
We did have some guidance from an architect, because when Hannah originally started designing these visuals for the downtown overlay, we were using three different-looking buildings. And he actually said, it might be easier for the development community to understand to use one, one building and show the forms on this one particular building. And out of those, there was probably what, the four or five different buildings that Hannah had kind of come up with, this is the one that the planning board chose that could be, we thought would give the best visual for what we were trying to portray.
So essentially, they could not have that off, that setback on that right side? They could, they could?
They could do all three if they wanted to. They would only be required to do one of the three. They have the option.
So if I'm looking at this, I could have a flat front, but just change the height of my building somewhere, and that would be considered one form?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that clarification. And then the last one, you mentioned something about sidewalks getting the person to the primary entrance, or the primary, yeah. Can you tell me a little bit more about that, as y'all change the text on that? When it comes to both roads with off-site parking, are we going to be able to get the residents from the sidewalk into a primary entrance if they choose not to put a entrance on each side?
Yes. In the text, it still states, "Adquate sidewalk shall be provided for the safe transition of the pedestrian user from any off-street, on-site parking to the primary user entrance." There should be a public-private setback zone to each entrance, and they will provide sidewalk activity area for outdoor exhibits, benches, and that's what it's talking about, coming from the sidewalk to the building, say for instance, from Great Wagon Road to the building, or from whatever off-site parking there might be, or on-site parking there may be, to wherever their pedestrian entrance is. So they're still required to safely get a pedestrian from anywhere into their building.
ADA compliance and that type of stuff?
Yes, that's where building code comes in.
Okay. Okay. And then one last thing, I'm sorry, I'm, guys. I mentioned last week during briefing about the word "large" and the definition of that in one of the texts. Was that taken a look at, or was there any clarification on that?
There, there wasn't. We did kind of feel that whenever we have, now that we have specific height requirements, obviously, something that's 48 feet is going to be considered a large building.
I was referring more to the parking lot, where you mentioned in the, about lar, you defined splitting a large parking lot, but I didn't know if there was any way for the developer to know, or that you guys know what is the, what constitutes a large parking lot?
Well, we don't have a specific number of spaces.
Okay.
But we do have provisions in our ordinance, say for instance, like Lowe's Foods parking lot, or Food Lion parking lot. That, in my interpretation, we considered more of a large parking lot. We do have motor vehicle surface area, I think I talked a little bit about that last week. Where islands have to be inserted or constructed inside of those parking areas or those parking lots to break up that, and certain types of landscaping have to be put into those islands so that the motor vehicle surface area, or MBSA is what we call it, is the parking lot, the actual asphalt area, has to have so many of those, so that when a large variety tree is planted, it has to have a continual diameter of about 75 feet, so that every time an island is placed, this is complicated, it is a little wordy, but every time an island is placed, when a large variety tree is planted inside of that island, which is a requirement, dependent on the area of the parking lot, would depend on how many islands they would have to have, because that one tree has that 75-foot diameter, every single parking spot has to be touched by that 75-foot diameter.
So do we have a large-defined parking lot at this point in the town? Because Lowe's doesn't have any plantings in the middle of the parking lot. Neither does Food Lion.
Food Lion does.
Food Lion does. Okay, so that would be an example of a large. Okay, thank you for that clarification.
And the community center, the Mary Alston Community Center, that, that was applied to that parking lot, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. You mentioned that all of the standards for architecturals were removed. Could you elaborate on?
Yes, they were not removed from the ordinance, they're just moved, if you will. LD1 and LD2 are zoning districts that a developer would actually have to rezone to. But they have facade requirements that are identical to the downtown overlay. So instead of putting the architectural and character standards in two places in the ordinance, if you'll notice, right before all of those straight terrains in the text, there, there's a little yellow section that says, "For LD1 and LD2, for the architectural character standards, refer to the downtown overlay." So all of those standards still apply to LD1 and LD2, it's just that we're not putting them in the ordinance, identical text in two places. It's just found in one spot.
Okay, so you don't think the language should be changed from removed to moved?
You refer. It says you have to refer to that specific section of the ordinance for the downtown overlay architectural standard. And what it's saying is, the downtown overlay standards apply to LD1 and LD2. So a specific section, that's where it's telling you to go to in the ordinance to find those regulations, instead of, like I said, typing them out or having them in the ordinance two to two.
I understand now, thank you.
Any other questions?
So picking up on what Jane said, I want to make sure I understand. So in looking at, exactly where you were, 10 architectural character standards, what I'm hearing you say, Stacy, is that the language, starting with the town of Louisville sees the interaction between the built environment and the public as crucial, et cetera, that that language is still in the ordinance, it's just somewhere else?
It's in the downtown overlay section.
Okay. So that language was not removed, there's still the robust, this is our intent, this is what?
Correct.
Okay. That was question number one, thank you. About the follow-up on Mayor's request that he made at the briefing, thank you for going back to the planning board. Just to be clear, this was the first planning board meeting where you had new members?
It was.
So you had three members who had been involved with this process that were not there as part of the discussion? But was it a full, obviously, you had quorum, was it a full contingent?
It was, yes. What I was able to do?
We'd only had, we only had four.
Right, we had a quorum, yeah, we didn't have any extras. It was people out of town.
So I'm just looking at continuity. So Jessica Higgins and Tom Lawson were the folks who were part of this and have a little bit of, little bit of institutional knowledge, not compared to what Mayor was talking about earlier. Were they able, were they there and able to address?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Jessica, she's, she's my, her and Bo are my grammar, help me out with those types of things.
She's a professor.
Yeah, Tom, Tom and Jessica, myself and Bo were able to go back and give a good background of what we've been working on, where we've come from for the two new members. Philip May is a new member, but he's, he's been a volunteer on other boards up until this point. So, so he's familiar with the process. And Kate actually, was, has been keeping up with, with what's been going on with the planning board, so she was pretty well aware of, of kind of how we got here and, and what our intent is and what we're trying to move forward to for the downtown overlay. So they were actually very helpful as well in their feedback.
Good, thank you. One question about that, too. And Mayor, you may be in a better position, or Councilwoman Sadler, or Councilwoman Welch. What was the original intent with creating doors? I mean, I get, for me, one of my hot items is the pedestrian scale. And so I get that that was possibly part of it, but do you have any insight? I mean, I always want to know what would be, what the rationale was before I say?
It was kind of open and shut, wouldn't you say?
My big recollection is, since it's fronting the street, and since there are sidewalks supposedly, parking in front sidewalks, people getting out on the sidewalk, they were going a door that was near the sidewalk. That's what I recall about them.
Yeah, we had, we actually had two, this one kind of, kind of managed to stay around for a while despite the fact that for all intents and purposes, it wasn't being a functional part of the, of the requirements. But we also had one, can you remember the, originally, we wanted to propose rear service street, so that the service vehicles could serve from the rear as opposed to having to sit? to take up a parking lot? Well, what we found out is that that was a great idea in principle, however, because of the varying setbacks and lot lengths and lot depths, it just wasn't workable. In this case, I think what we found, if you look at the Lowe's Plaza, and you look at the shops, not the Lowe's food shop, but the little shops, the other retail establishments that front what will be the Great Wagon Road, we said, yeah, you got to have some kind of articulation there for a door, for entranceway. Well, nobody's going to use those because you park on the other side. And so the discussion was, okay, we still have to have, provide access from where people would be walking to where they would come in the building. But basically, you look at Lowe's Foods and you have a bunch of doors that nobody ever uses. Same thing is true with the ABC store. When we looked at that, we talked about it fronted Shalaford Road, and so we required them to have, I believe, we settled out to have an entranceway, but I think we sorted it out and just had windows, display windows. And of course, they're never used, they're all papered up, so that wasn't a very good idea. So I think the evolution of this is if you, people are going to be people, and they're going to do what they're going to do, which is if you're going, if we're requiring parking lots to be on the side or in the back, then why force people to walk all the way around the front of the building to come in when they're not going to do that? So that was the whole idea of them attempting to make the streetscape more attractive, so we don't have big brick walls facing the street, but still make it practical for what's being used and how they're being built.
Thank you, that's helpful. Just one other, well, actually, two more quick things. So Stacy, when the planning board, I think this was even before your time, developed the lighting ordinance, I think it was when Josh Harold was here, we went round and round and ultimately landed on something with the intent to say, things are going to change and we'll look at this again relatively soon and update it as technology is changing, et cetera. When you all were reviewing the whole DTA, downtown ordinance, was there a review of that, or was that just bringing forward the previous?
There wasn't a review. We just wanted to make sure that all the commercial standards, especially lighting, you know, those types of things, were spelled out in the downtown overlay, so there wouldn't be a question of...
Got it.
Is it, does it apply, does it not apply? So that's why we reference the lighting section in this now.
Thank you. And then lastly, what Councilwoman Hunt mentioned a little earlier, so the three options, they can pick one, and that's sufficient? Thank you.
On the connectivity of parking, what's the rationale for having that connectivity between parking areas? What is that, what are you thinking?
It's to limit the driveway cuts along Shalaford, Great Wagon Road, and those types of things. A lot of times, what I'm seeing now is NC DOT is not allowing multiple driveway cuts. And so that kind of lends the benefit of still being able to develop a property even without a driveway cut if they have connectivity through the parking lots, so that they don't have to, you know, exit back onto Shalaford to turn right back into another establishment.
Oh, so are we talking about connectivity for, because we had this discussion, seems like years ago, we wanted there to be connectivity.
Same idea, Ken.
Same, okay, all right. Let's see, and you already talked about uniformative appearance, I guess, removing the doors, but having facades or something that would give the impression, that would kind of give you the same feel of the structures around it. And then the other thing I was a little confused about is the 812 versus, did you say if it was an 812, then irrespective of if there's a 1212 somewhere else on the structure, the 812 would still dictate how high the building could be?
That's correct.
Is that right? What's the rationale for that?
We didn't want, I can't, the language that Tom Lawson always uses when he describes this, but we didn't want, you know, a low-sloped or flat roof to be a continual flat roof at 48 feet high.
I see, okay.
So we wanted to give the option of if you have, you know, a very high pitched roof, then you could go to 48 feet, but if it was less than 812, then we could not allow you to go that high for the concern of having a very large, very tall, just even keel level roof pitch.
Yeah. So, well, I don't want to get too deep into it, I'm just wondering, there's something that would give you the visual reference for that. I don't, I mean, I guess I'm having difficulty seeing if you've got one like this, and then one that's like this, then what would, the interplay between them, if they were architecturally, if they fit together architecturally, what would be the opposition to having? I mean, I just need to see it. I mean, Tom has something in his head when he thinks about that, and I'm not sure I have it.
I think the main thing that the regulation comes from is that if it is, any portion of the structure is low-sloped, or we consider less than 812, or flat roof, that it couldn't be very, very tall.
Yeah.
The only way that they could go very, very tall, or 48 feet, would be to have a significantly pitched roof. And I think what that will do is, say for instance, really like the level of the wall, if you will, the horizontal wall, it won't go to 48 feet because you're going to have that steep roof, steep pitched roof on top of it. So technically, it, you know, might only go to 38 feet or 40 feet.
The peak of the roof will be at 40.
The peak of the roof is what would be at 48 feet.
Right, right.
So even at 48 feet with an 812 to 1212, just the magnitude of the wall will not be 48 feet tall.
So is he trying to mitigate the height sense by creating this gable that's...
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions for Stacy? All righty, ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. Anybody in the audience wish to speak in support of or in opposition to the proposed changes in our downtown overlay? Please come forward, state your name and address.
Good evening, Susan, Friday, 165, Will Austin Court. Wasn't planning to speak tonight, but then when that front door issue came up, which I was not, you know, I wasn't aware of that part, I just have a couple of thoughts on it. I understand that, yes, most people are driving and they're going into the parking lot, so why not have that be the main entrance? And I, you know, I'm okay with that. My concern is, and I think, I'm just trying to jot notes really quickly, one of the examples that was used was the vets' office, which, you know, to me, I just think the way the vets' office is situated is unappealing. And to have that, whether they have windows or not, to have that flat front facing, street-facing part of the building, it is, to me, unappealing. If, you know, if we wanted to say we have to have windows, I would want more than that, something more three-dimensional, like a required, like an awning or something, to give it more than just that flat surface on the main streets. That's the only thought that came to my head. I don't, if there's a door there or not a door there, you know, as long as they can, as long as if I'm walking and I can figure out how to get into the building, that's fine. But just looking at, even though I know the vets' office has a window there, it, to me, it's unappealing. That might be also because you can still see the mechanical equipment on top of the roof, which is unappealing. But I think something with more, you know, we talked about, we don't want that flat facade in the front. I would want some sort of requirement to have, not just a flat area. That being said, the other thing that I, since I'm up here, I do want to talk about is the 812, 1212, and watching the work that Stacy and the planning board did over and over and over again, and they just kept at it, kept at it, and it was amazing. I'm telling you, the hours, probably calendar years went into coming up with that, and they just, they never gave up. It was a wonderful, wonderful board, and Stacy just kept going in there, and they just, they just kept going at it. You know, I had it easy, thanks to Zoom, I was just sitting back on my couch and having a glass of wine, but, you know, they had to stay there and work at it, and they did. And they did a wonderful job, and I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? I don't see anyone at all, and we'll close the public hearing. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Stacy, just kind of recapping what you were saying, we are planning on requiring some articulation, some facade enhancement, so that it doesn't look like a flat wall.
We are, yeah.
I was going to ask you, could you put, you put that in the PowerPoint presentation? Could I just see that one more time? Because I had the same concern. And I think when I read it, here we go.
This building with walls with street frontage, that would mean anything that fronts a public right way, shall emphasize pedestrian-oriented architectural features such as facade articulation, windows, awning, porticoes, and other similar features.
Okay, thank you. And pedestrian-oriented, but also one of the items that has come up in the past about needing a little clarity is pedestrian scale, which gets at this point of the human's experience with the building and making sure that it feels that you're not overwhelmed. Pedestrian scale is an industry term. So pedestrian-oriented is one thing, pedestrian scale was in the previous, it's still there. Was there a definition that was teased out anywhere?
There was not. A lot of what in the research that myself and planning board did, a lot of what we were seeing was building mass. They were having regulations for building mass in order to lessen the overall overarching scale of a building. And so that, it's kind of, scale mass is kind of an interchangeable term. Mass is a lot of what...
You were saying. Okay, thank you.
A lot of effort to avoid chasing that difficult sort of definition by using some of the, some of the features that were proposed.
The industry's experiencing that as well, and so that's the direction. Thank you.
If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve as brought forward to us.
Second.
For the women, make a motion. Ms. Foster makes the second. Any further discussion? All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Stacy, please, pat yourself on the back for your great work. Carry our thanks back to them, please, for their hard work on this, because this is a significant piece of ordinance that you all brought forward. Thank them very much and recognize their efforts.
Yeah.
Ready, old business, I believe, Ms. Foster. You have something on VAC?
Well, just very briefly, we did a lot of discussing at the briefing, and the work group met, and the work group will be, they meet weekly, and you all can chime in here, but the plan is for there to be a report back to counsel at the briefing with the material in the, Dora, in the agenda packet. So that's May the 5th, I think it is, is the briefing. Yep, so the agenda packet would be received with any materials. I heard, Councilwoman Hunt, you liked the idea of the Gantt chart, which showed the percentage completion, and the recommendations that would be coming forth at that time. And what's queued up is orientation. It's something that has been happening on a regular basis historically, or supposed to. There's been some orientation that hasn't occurred in the past few years. So that's a, that's a big need. But the intent is to keep moving along with what we have made reference to in the previous documents and previous updates, so comments? Hank, Stacy, Dora?
No, I think that sums it up.
If I recall, counsel's discussion at briefing, we wanted to try to take a look at prioritizing these items that came forward, rather than having just all of them thrown at one time. So we could focus, certainly, some are underway, some are almost in the completion phase, but I think part of what we wanted back as a counsel was look at some prioritization of these tasks. Does that, okay?
So I think we're all saying the same thing, because we've prioritized the things that we are working on, we consider it a priority, so we can dig into that more clearly if that would be helpful.
It would be helpful. Any questions for Ms. Foster?
Thank you, guys.
Hank, part F.
All right.
Folks, do we want to take five minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
I can see people saying that. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to take a five-minute break, but if you are watching this at home, you will not be sitting there for five minutes, because we will edit it together so it'll look like we're gone and back like that. So let's take five minutes if we could.
Oh, I think I need that. My socks are hot. It was hot. Oh, man.
Snacks, right? Is there snacks over there?
Hello, Jane. How are you?
I'm good, Ken.
Good.
Can I get chili? Is it just me?
Look at the rocks. They used to harbor some of them.
What's that?
We have a little partial rest.
Oh, no, 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 no. You all better watch out. We should all just sit up in the seats and be like...
Did he really have tennis?
Yeah.
Did he get over?
No, you know, he has open blood pressure issues, and if his blood pressure goes up, sure he has that. But he just...
I got it.
He went to Memphis when he was... I think he actually... But it's, you know, never...
What's that? Morris? Morris?
I can't think of who y'all...
But you can get some devices that will...
Yeah.
Does it go along with it?
I don't know. I was just going to co-ask you that, but it was about the same, about the same time.
What did you bring, Brad?
Did you bring me a snack?
No. Did you want my snack? I'll bring it up there and back in one and a half minutes. I done timed myself. I grabbed, they had their little ho-hos, and I grabbed one and had it in and out in 30 seconds.
David didn't bring me one either. Are you eating that popcorn?
He's eating healthy stuff.
Next time will be chips. They got chips up there?
Yeah, I'm doing.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna pass.
Excuse me.
The nabs are the other thing.
Nabs and Mountain Dew.
Do they have those up there?
They got nabs. Uh, they don't have, they don't have real nabs. They don't have nabs like when you're out working on a Saturday, nabs with a Mountain Dew. They don't have that.
The little round ones, other ones.
They got little round ones up there, and then they got those square.
The nice, nifty. My wife Brenda likes the little round. I don't like the round, because I like, I like.
Square ones, yeah, I like the square ones too.
Veggie cracker.
Missing hockey, my hockey boys. Looks kinda healthy, veggie. Oh, thank you. Looks good, though. I saw. Better than telling.
Believe everybody's back? Create us some confusion, I think, if you're watching at home right now. There, there wasn't a back-to-back edit there. We haven't figured out how to do the time warp continuing thing yet. But when you watch this on a replay on TV six, that's when you'll see us back-to-back. What is he talking about? And why does he go on like this? Alrighty. Hank, Part F.
Okay.
A, a few resolutions here. Let me see, make sure I'm getting the right ones here. The first is Resolution twenty-two zero two zero, approving Part F twenty-twenty-two documents. And this is Attachment nine. If you look at that, the first thing that you had on there was the CIP. I will take note that we did do some modification to the pricing as we went through the briefing last, last week. One of the things that you'll go to in the agenda packet is that you noted that we've done some adjustment. The nature trail, I believe, is unchanged at a hundred and twenty-four thousand nine hundred dollars. This is, of course, the half-mile trail with the associated support features connecting this community center to the park, and then a little jog around the parking lot. Disc golf, after some consideration, we did reduce that cost to sixty thousand dollars. And then the outdoor event space, this was in conjunction with some discussions we had with a friend of mine that works with McGill, who helped us out two years ago with this. Based on what he's seen in doing this type of venue and our discussion of it, he felt like, once you finished and you put in any type of electrical and AV potential that you may need in a space like that, you're, we're better off figuring out about two hundred thousand dollars on it. Like I said last week, it's better to go high on your estimate, because if you go high and you get under, then you're able to utilize the additional funds with it. If you're high on one and you're low on another, you can edit or shift the funds between something that you've got some money left over with and something you might have come up with short. So we're feeling good about this one. Moving a little forward down to it, you'll see down there that we had some adjustment after some clarification on the, the construction management site planning. That is a twenty percent figure. So the twenty percent that we've got in there is at seventy-six thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. That is twenty percent of the subtotal that you see above at three hundred and eighty-four thousand nine hundred dollars. And that's what we've got it laid out. And then we also have a five percent contingency that's right below the three hundred and eighty-four thousand nine hundred dollars that you see in the, the cost for the project itself. If you move down to on the second part of.
Hank, one clarification before you move down.
Yes, sir.
Even though we have this in year one, year two, and year three, it doesn't necessarily mean that we are gonna take three years.
That, that's great. This is just a, a visual document. We're not held out. We can do these projects at any pace we see fit. We just have to get them done in three years. You move down a little further into the, the lower part of that Part F for the recreation, where you start talking about the split in the costs. You'll see that all the costs are split fifty-fifty, with the exception of the five percent contingency that remains something that the town will set aside in case there's any overages for it. Including the twenty percent on the construction management as well. So that seventy-six thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars is then covered in half by a Part F as well. So when you pull all those totals down from those columns, you'll see that the general fund, if we're successful, would, would bear two hundred and fifty thousand one hundred and eighty-five dollars of the project, with the Part F grant matching it with two hundred and thirty thousand nine hundred and forty, forty dollars, for a total of the project at four hundred and eighty-one thousand one hundred and twenty-five. The difference in those two is the five percent contingency. All right? So that is a difference in the refinement of the numbers as we went over last time. The only other thing that I will bring attention to in this is we also talked about the facts and assurances. We have in here, and the facts and assurances, that the local government contact person for the grant, as well as the local government manager, is designated on the form that you've got in the form as me. We're going to change that to the contact person in the upper left-hand quadrant. I think it is going to be Stacy Tolbert, and then I'll remain in, going through on the application as the manager. Okay? Thanks to all the, for the first resolution.
Any questions for Hank? We'll need a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Sattler makes the motion. Mr. Smithman makes the second. Any further discussion?
It was Dr. Sattler. Yes, it was. Yeah, he, I'll have him speak a little louder next time.
Any other, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Jack Warren Master Plan, Hank.
Okay, the next is Resolution twenty-twenty-two dash zero two one. This is approving Jack Warren Site, uh, Jack Warren Park Master Plan, Site Plan. That is unchanged from our discussion last week. You'll see that they, it still depicts the three things that we are going forward with, with the nature trail, the disc golf, and the outdoor event space. And that is ready for your approval this evening.
Any questions for the manager?
This went to the Parks Rec?
It was presented last week in between, this week, actually, at their last meeting.
Any issues?
None.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Entertain a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Smithman makes the motion. I paused for Ms. Hunt to get in, but she didn't. Ms. Welch did. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
All right. Then the last one, twenty-twenty-two dash zero twenty-two, is approval to proceed with the Part F application process. It basically says that you've seen the, the grants, the, the application and the materials, and you're proceeding with the submission of the application for May second.
Entertain a motion, please?
Motion.
Ms. Hunt makes the motion. Ms. Foster makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. Pam, you have a series of related ones for us.
Yes. The next four resolutions are to approve four policies that are required as a part of receiving the American Rescue Plan money. The first one is an eligible project policy. And basically, it just outlines the, the four broad categories of eligible uses for the money. It also outlines what we cannot spend our money on. Are there any questions about that first one?
Entertain a motion, please?
I'm moved.
Second.
Dr. Sattler makes the motion. Mr. Smithman makes the second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous.
And the second one is Resolution two-zero-two-two-zero-two-six. It's a non-discrimination policy.
Any questions for Pam? Entertain a motion, please?
Motion. Second.
Ms. Foster makes the motion. Ms. Hunt makes the second. Any additional discussion?
I have a question for Pam. Pam, that needs to be signed. Is there a particular date or something that you're going, that those non-discrimination stuff signed?
I'll let you know.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous.
And the third one is Resolution two-zero-two-two-zero-two-seven, and this is a property management policy.
Any questions for Pam? Entertain a motion, please?
Move for approval?
Is that Ms. Welch?
Second.
Dr. Sattler makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous. And the final one, Pam?
Is Resolution two-zero-two-two-zero-two-eight, and it's a record retention policy.
Any questions for Pam? Not, entertain a motion, please?
I had a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry. What did we decide on that as far as how long we retain, we keep records?
According to the Act, we have to keep all records related to our expenditures for five years.
Okay.
From the time the last expenditure is made.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Hunt makes the motion. Ms. Foster makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. That is unanimous. David, you have a report for us from the Grants Committee?
Yes, Counsel. We had our special Projects Review Committee meeting last Tuesday, Thursday, sorry. It was very late. It was very comical. There are pictures somewhere online. That was a joke. Of course, there may be. Here I go again. All right, so.
Grants Committee.
Whenever someone requests money, they come to us, and it's the Grants Committee. So me and Jane and Melissa, we got together, and we reviewed this last week. It is for the senior services. They provide meals to people in our community, and they have been doing that for a while. Last year, we so chose to increase our donation amount to nine thousand dollars, which was above what they asked for. This past, or for this budget, they have asked for nine thousand dollars again, which they said is appropriate for what needs we have. So we voted unanimously, you, we all approved it at the same time. And so we're bringing it before the council tonight, and we're asking that you would approve it. And so we're asking for ordinance two-zero-two-two dash zero two zero, Budget Amendment for donations to senior services.
Make the motion by Mr. Smithman?
Second.
Ms. Hunt, Ms. Welch makes the second. Any discussion?
No discussion, Mayor, but I just want to make a comment. It would feed, it's gonna feed at least six residents of Louisville for the entire program, for the entire year, is my understanding. So that's three meals a week for six residents of Louisville. Very happy that we can help contribute there.
Any other comments?
That, that includes, so that fifteen hundred dollars a year. Also, individuals can get meals for, I think it's seven dollars each. So that would include those individuals as well that might be part of the program.
Very good. Any other comments or discussion? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you. Hank, our AV stuff.
Yes. Let's see here. We've got consideration of Budget Amendment two-zero-two-two zero two one. And this is going to be for thirty-seven thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars. And this, of course, the discussion that we had for the retrofit of this, this room for audiovisual equipment. We had some mention towards the end of the, the discussion by the mayor to look and see if we could do some modification to the, the screens in front of you to include some cameras in that, that system. That's, they're gonna look at that. They have been unable to find something like that. It's gonna be a little bit of a tough nut to crack. I would go ahead and go forward with the project. Let Clark Powell continue to try to see if they can make that work, and then cover any kind of amendment to the project on the backside, if they're able to do it. They just couldn't get anything put together in a week to be able to find something to make that happen.
Hank?
Yes, ma'am.
I thought the mayor, and I think even Ms. Hunt mentioned something about changing this up too. Was that also part of what was?
That's what I was just talking about.
I heard the camera.
Well, the camera's in the, in the screens in front of you. That was what was discussed.
But, but I heard the issue being that this was just too high.
Well, what we're hoping for is that a lot of the modern monitors that you've got right now, you can end up with the same screen size, but the bezel's gonna be a lot thinner. Those things, I, I'm not looking at what you're looking at right now, but I'm, I'm sure that they're probably pretty thick, maybe an inch or so around their border, around the screen. So they are gonna see if they can find something smaller. But hopefully, with an update in the monitor, we'll be able to get some, without losing screen size, you'll be able to get some less bulk in those monitors in front of you.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions for Hank? Entertain a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Foster makes the motion. Mr. Smithman makes the second after a pause.
All right, and then the next we add.
I can have a vote.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
We can make that assumption, but I'll jump in and have a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Right.
Thank you. That is unanimous.
All right. Next, we're, we added the Resolution two-zero-two-two-two-nine, and this was for the council to be able to approve the contract. This was, because the contract is at thirty-seven thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars, it is mostly equipment, but there is some, it is a contract, and they're gonna be doing some installs. We need to get the council to approve this as well.
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Smithman makes the motion. Ms. Welch makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous. You skipped over our manager recruitment process.
Well, I had that after the.
That's next.
The next, next part.
So you guys slipped some in on.
Well, I just put the contract with the budget amendment, so.
Okay. Folks, I think I sent some notes out to you. First off, for those of you watching at home, or wherever you might be watching, our manager Hank Perkins, after eight years.
Ten years this July, if I may.
I'm not doing very good with time today, am I? No. After ten years with, with us as our town manager, doing an exemplary job in guiding us through a very, very exciting time in the town's growth, has decided he wants to take a job up in Lake Lorip. I don't know why he would like to leave Louisville for Lake Lorip, but he has accepted a position effective May twenty-seventh.
Well, that's my last day here.
Last day here, so first part of June, then.
Yes, sir.
And so his last day with us will be May twenty-seventh, so we have a lot of work to do between now and then to make sure that we do have a good transition. Hank, we'll, we'll talk a little more about your departure at our, at our May meeting. But what I would like, Counsel, is for us to go ahead and approve the process that I laid out, I believe, in an email to you. We can go over it briefly if you want to. Let me. And as Mike says, did he bring that with him? Let me see if I can recall the sailing points. Number one, I think we would like to use the Piedmont Regional Council to handle our recruitment for manager. Now, they've worked with us several times in the past. In fact, Matt Reese, who is part of the Piedmont Council, was instrumental in, in recruiting Hank and screening Hank for us. They will do the screening. We will have a, thank you, David. Look at that. They will, they will call from whatever applicants they get. In fact, they'll, they'll do the advertising, they'll do the reach-outs. They'll do everything they can to try to secure a group of applicants for us. What, second thing I propose is for us to have a, a council, what I'll call a resume or a candidate search group, review group. And that group will screen those candidates brought to us, and then set up an opportunity for the entire council to interview those people that the smaller committee feels are best suited for the job. I've asked Matt if he would do a Zoom meeting with us, the entire council. I think some of the concerns that he expressed to me when we talked was that three years ago, they would have maybe one or two or three communities looking for a manager. Now they have two pages of people looking for managers. I don't know if this is the year that managers move or quit, or whatever the story is, but he said it is, it is very, very difficult right now. And he wants to go, he wants to, wants to go, set our expectations so that we're, we're looking at this the appropriate way, and, and we would like to do that. Rather than hire an interim manager, I mean, we've gone that route in the past. We have a, a very competent staff, and the manager has already been offloading a number of responsibilities to those folks as they, as they have been, I guess, maturing in their roles, but also in him's recognition that he might be leaving. They have been more fully integrated into those processes. So rather than hiring an interim manager, we designate the appropriate person on staff to serve as interim, and that gives them the opportunity, or the, that fulfills our legal requirements, to be able to sign checks and do personnel hirings, which would, that probably would not happen without the council's acknowledgement, anyway. Hank, what else is involved in, in that interim position?
Well, basically, just filling under the rules of being your town manager. Well, basically, just filling under the rules of being your town manager.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so that would be, my suggestion is that we do that with our staff person, the appropriate staff person. Hank, you can make a recommendation for us on that. And then I think the big one is just to make sure that we identify the critical projects that you're working on, Hank, and making sure we don't have any slippage on those. We've got six weeks to get them all lined up and make sure that everybody's clear of what's going on so we don't have any slippage during that period of time.
I can assure you that our staff is well aware of what we've got going on for those. I've kept them in the loop with it.
Very good. So that is the proposal I have for you all. And get your thoughts and comments and then we'll move forward.
Mayor, with the talent pool being, or with the pool, so many people being needed in that town manager role, what was the thought process behind not pulling in an interim?
I think the, when we have had interim managers in the past, it's really been a chair filler. Staff was still continuing to do all the work and we were paying a pretty good salary for somebody to sit in that chair. I don't think we've ever been in a position like we are today where we have the level of competence among our staff that we do. I think the dynamics are good. They're working together, they communicate well. They respect and understand each other. And I think throwing a unknown body into that mix would probably be more unsettling than helpful.
Understood. Thank you.
Now, if it turns out that we have a two-year manager search, we may want to think about that. But hopefully we won't have that kind of.
So will there be a time period in which we will decide as a, you know, decide that pay is too much?
I think after Matt Sessano lays out expectations, then we'll have a pretty good idea how long this process should take.
So he puts together the advertisement?
Yep.
And we review it?
Yep.
All right. And not in this context, but in others, where we, where I've been in organizations where they were going to use an interim person from staff, typically, and this is just your consideration and to think about, typically that person would then not be, would not be somebody who would, would put in an application for the position. And so I'm just wondering if we want to take that approach or if you don't care.
Hank, do you want to speak to, you've had some discussions with staff?
Speak to what, sir?
What Dr. Sadler was talking about.
I think it's anyway. I mean, anybody that can put an application in or a resume for the job. I don't know, I mean, whether or not anyone on staff has any interest in it. I wouldn't be able to know. I know I have a pretty good idea of who wouldn't, but I don't know. I mean.
Well, my comment wasn't related to personalities at all. It's related to process and what.
Somebody would be chosen that would bar themselves from applying?
Yes. That's typically what, in other organizations, when somebody's named as an interim dean or interim whatever, they're typically somebody that takes themselves out of the applicant pool.
I've never personally seen that in municipal government.
And that's what I said. I said, not in this context. I said, in other.
Okay.
Environments. And I don't know that that would not apply. I mean, if you think organizationally and operationally, that from organization to organization, it is only the particular things that they have to deal with that differ. It's not, it's not, management is management, I guess is what I'm getting to. So anyway, I mean, I'm just throwing it out for people to consider whether they would want to think about that or if it doesn't make any difference.
And I think ultimately, all the applications are going to come back to the Council for review and consideration.
Well, I understand that and that, that's, well, okay, well. You can talk to the person who is going to be the consultant and get their opinion about that. Because it's not, it's not atypical. Let me just put it that way, to approach it that way. In town municipals, it may be atypical. I don't know.
We can pull that into our pool of questions for Matt.
Right.
And Dr. Sadler, from your experience where it has happened, the rationale was what?
Well, if you feel, first off, a person who is in that position, who is, the most recent one I can think of was at a college, that person, they become disgruntled if they're not picked. Let me just put it like that.
That's, that's my experience.
Yeah, that's the reason. It's not that they shouldn't apply or couldn't apply, but it could be that there's somebody else that comes along who is head and shoulders above them in terms of skill set and qualification and all those things. Not that they wouldn't be doing a good job in the interim. It's just that you might see somebody that you think is stronger as a candidate. And now you've got this person who has been loyal and all those things to the town.
Right.
And you didn't pick them. And you've got this new person coming who's got to deal with that.
That's right.
I mean, so it's all of that stuff in the mix. So that's, that's why I say ask somebody who knows more about it than me, who deals with this on a daily basis. And then make a decision as to whether you want to put somebody in that position or not.
Let's put, we've got six weeks to kind of sort that, sort through that. So let's put that in the mix in our conversation with Matt.
I bet we got longer than that.
Well, to name an interim manager, yeah.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
So the four items that you laid out, I agree with everything. I would like to talk a little bit more about the interim piece. I hear you say that in the past, it's been just a chair filler. Well, nobody wants that. But I've got a couple of concerns. If I'm staff, I understand. I mean, I've been in the position where you bring in an interim. Who wants to do that? I mean, you know, it just, it's not necessarily an appealing thing when you've got your rhythms and your whatevers and bringing in someone else. It just, it changes things up. I just want to make sure we don't miss an opportunity if there is something that could be additive to that. Is there, and I've seen in scenarios where the interim serves in a different capacity, if you want to think of it as more of a consultant, where if there are questions about, so how have we done things in the past? What should we, what's working? What would you like to see done differently? So less partly management, but also assisting with review. I'm reading, I'm reading the room here, but that's, that's a thought. And then the other piece has to do with the workload that staff is currently under and is continuing to be under. We're moving into budget season. We've talked about the comp plan. We know we've got some things queuing up for orientation, new members. There's a lot to occur. And a model that we, the previous planning board that I was on mentioned, and I brought this up to this group before, is, you know, does it make sense at times to bring in and outsource support? So if Stacy and planning needs some additional help, we've had the experience, we had an intern come in and do some of the work. Some of the stuff that Stacy needs to get done, I don't want to speak for Stacy, but just from knowing what previous recommendations had been coming out of previous planning boards, was could we just maybe use PTRC to help offload some of the basics of planning so that in that case, I can't speak to the other departments, where we could provide some support and assistance to get things moving? So I appreciate saying, oh, we've got a great staff, no doubt about it. They can handle it, no doubt about it. But something's going to suffer.
Well, one of the expectations, I think, in this discussion would be, and as we move forward over the next six weeks, is for staff to evaluate what additional requirements will be placed on them.
That sounds good.
And I think our staff will speak out very quickly. Then they'll say, there's just too much, I can't get it done. We'll define exactly what extra responsibilities they will have. Hank, I don't, I don't see it as additional work, at least in our conversations, that they're not already doing. This is simply to fulfill the legal obligation of being able to have an interim.
Yeah, I mean, there's some responsibilities that managers have that could come up, but I'm not, I kind of feel like that having someone on staff being the interim is not going to be that big a drain on what they're doing right now, unless it goes on for a long time.
Define a long time.
A year.
Yeah. I mean, you're talking about going six months to a year, you know, that kind of.
Okay. Okay.
And again, we rely on staff to say to us as a council, if we don't have a manager present, that we're really drowning and we need help. We need to think about how we're handling our workload.
I hear that.
And we'll be responsive to that.
And I hear that. I've experienced that the culture is, sometimes there's a badge of honor to just say, nope, we'll make do. And I want to make sure that we are not just espousing that, but we would support.
I think our staff is pretty good. I don't think they put up a badge of honor.
Yeah. If I didn't think we had a staff that could be competent and handle it well, I wouldn't be even suggesting that we use an interim manager from within. I mean, I feel that confident about the people that we have working for the town.
Mayor? Agreed.
Yep.
Are you finished with it, whenever? Even if it's for a short time, I would think if I was a staff member and I'm doing the extra duties, there should be some compensation.
Well, there usually is.
Financial.
Yes, ma'am.
How does that work?
That's going to end up being negotiated with whoever's going to be taking it. I mean, for instance, when, yeah, I mean, that's.
We'll identify what the additional responsibilities are and then we'll know if additional compensation or how much compensation should be recognized for those additional duties.
Okay.
We agree with that. And so I think that part of what the process is going to be is for us to work all that out in the near term, rather than try to figure it out tonight.
Yep.
I agree with Dr. Sadler. I'm ready to, I agree with your statements and your points and the policy or the organization of how we go about doing this. Let's go ahead and move forward as we need to, but then have room for discussion later.
Very good. And as we begin to establish this smaller group, and again, the purpose of the smaller group is not to really do anything except handle the resumes as they're coming from PTRC, make some determination about which ones of those resumes the Council needs review.
Mayor, this meeting with Matt, is that going to be a meeting that's just with this smaller committee? Or would that be a meeting with all of Council?
I think it needs to be all of us.
Understood. Thank you.
I think the Council is in.
Right.
Wait, I agree.
Every step that we're taking.
And the other thing about a screening, because I've done this. So this group, this smaller group that's going to do the screening, my inclination is also to have anybody have access to anything they want, all right, among the Council.
Yep.
Absolutely.
So even though you may have three or four, whatever the mayor decides, I guess it'll be three, so it wouldn't be four, because we'll have too many. But if those three people who are doing that screening process, they will have a, they'll have a methodology for looking at those applications. And that'll be, you'll, the Council, whoever that is at Council, will become aware of that. And then anybody who wants to see any application would be welcome to do it because that's a right you have anyway, so.
Absolutely. Okay. Everybody fine? Yeah.
Yep.
Very good. All righty.
All right.
Hank, upcoming events, please. I think we're, is that the point we're at?
It is. Okay. Of course, we're going to be closed tomorrow for Good Friday. And then moving forward a little bit on the, I guess we're talking about May 6, we're going to have movie night. It's going to be our first of the season. It's going to be Raiders of the Lost Ark in the square. And a little further on the 30th, we're going to enjoy our Memorial Day concert with the Embers. And that's where I'll stop. Moving forward with the manager's report, the only thing I've got right now is probably just to rehash what I've discussed last weekend. Is that we went through the fourth attempt to bid out the Gateway Project and again, got no interested parties for doing that. I've had some contact with Jeff Turner, who has been having some conversations with a couple of contractors. But, you know, again, he prefaces it with, we've heard that before too. So we continue to see if we can come up with a tack that might end up putting our project with another project that is in similar stage for being able to enhance the gravity of the project and increase some interest in it from the construction industry.
Stacy, anything for us? Very good. Beau, anything for us? Dora, Clerk's Report, please.
He was about, I thought I heard, were you done?
I'm finished, yes.
Oh, I thought I heard you about to say so. I'm sorry, Mayor.
So just a reminder that your budget workshops begin Monday evening at 6:00. Your workshop will be down here. We'll have tables spread out, well, set up basically in a U shape so that it'll make it easier when working through the budget process. So that's your first one. And then the rest of the dates are on your agenda as well. And then the second item is the Volunteer Appreciation Ice Cream Social has been scheduled for Friday, May 6, from 6:00 to 8:00 at the Mary Alice Warren Community Center. The plan is to have the event on the back patio. Invitations have already been sent to the boards and committees. We are requesting those individuals to respond. We have encouraged them to invite their families. And we hope that the Council will be able to be with us and serve our boards and committee members and their families. And we're just looking for a great evening.
One note on our budget meetings. Ladies and gentlemen, these are open meetings and you're certainly asked and encouraged to attend to learn how we spend your money. So obviously, you won't be able to participate. This is where the Council has an opportunity to really dig deep into the numbers, but you'll certainly be able to get a greater understanding of the issues that we're going to be talking about during our budget workshops. All righty. Hank, approvals of our last briefing.
Okay. We, looks like we had five things I'm looking at here. We approved the 2022 budget calendar that was, as we just discussed earlier in the Clerk's Report. We approved the revised 2022 meeting schedule in general. We also went through the approval of Ordinance 2022-017. This was a budget amendment for CERT kits. This was for our upcoming CERT training for community members. It's up to a class of 25 individuals. It will be ended up in, I guess, the first weekend of June. And then past that, Ordinance 2022-018, which was a budget amendment for the MSD lake tree removal. And then lastly, Resolution 2022-023, the contract with LUSK for the tree removal for the MSD lakes.
Very good. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we occasionally find it necessary to take actions at our budget meeting. And when we do, we like to report those out at our regular town council meeting. So it gets the broadest distribution of our residents to be able to know what we did last week.
Our briefings.
About our briefings. About our briefings. All righty. Council, we're at one final opportunity for public comment. Anybody have anything they wish to say? Please come forward, state your name, your address. See lots of head shaking. Folks at home, again, if you'd like to submit a comment, send it to townclerk@lewisvillenc.net, townclerk@lewisvillenc.net, and we'll make it a part of our record. Council members, closing comments, thoughts?
I have a couple of comments, Mayor. First of all, I want to take the time to thank the staff for y'all's efforts and all of, everything that y'all have done as it relates to all of town business. And then secondly, thank you guys that are taking the time to be with us this evening, to sit in the audience. So I appreciate that. But that's all. And thank you, guys.
I just want to say how much Miss Hank, and I notice his Kleenex box is empty. Must be a reason. But you've been excellent to work with and.
Thank you.
We will have a Hank tribute meeting when we meet.
I knew that'd be really short.
Set aside a portion of that meeting. Council members, any other comments?
I probably, well, I wasn't in the briefing, so I don't know what, what did the C E R T stand for?
Citizen Emergency Response Training.
Oh, okay.
Or community, one or the other. It's meant to give the training to individuals that live in Louisville.
Council members, anything else? Very good. With that, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Smithman makes the motion. Ms. Hunt makes the second. Any further discussion?
Oh.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. Can we, I'm, maybe you'll have this and I'm more aware of it as well, but can we have an update on the usage of the Mary Alice Warren Community Center? Just the general activity, just so we kind of know, you know, how things are going?
Sure. Sure, I think that'd be really helpful.